Report on that, I'm sure, at a subsequent time in the meeting. Before I call the meeting into order, I just want to remind everybody that we're doing these meetings on a hybrid basis. We've been doing it since COVID. People can call in if we have a public hearing. If we don't have a public hearing, you can still call in for public comment. Some folks here will be in the audience tonight for both those participatory opportunities from the public in general. And we welcome people to call in. We'll put the call-in information is on the screen now and be ready to go because the community comment comes up fairly quickly. And so having provided that information, I'm going to call the meeting into order and ask our clerk, Sharon Ellison, to call the roll.
Councilmember Agnew is absent. Councilmember Jackson?
Here.
Councilmember Pierce?
Here.
Councilmember Rissler?
Here.
Mayor Havelin?
Here. Our colleague Kate Agnew is missing tonight because she had a baby. I mean, like, just a little while ago, had a baby. And her third girl. And so it's exciting for her and her family, and we wish her the best and wish she was here to join us this evening. And then a resting agenda and look forward to the conversations with all the people that will be involved in the meeting this evening. The next thing we're going to do, yes.
If I could, I'm fairly certain that we could wave to the camera and she might be watching.
Oh.
So congratulations.
Congratulations. Wish you the best, Kate and little Kate. All right, let's, the next thing is a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everyone. We've got a meeting agenda that's been published for the benefit of the public and the members of the council. In advance of the meeting, is there anyone on the council or from a staff level that wishes to amend or change the meeting agenda in any form or fashion? Is there a motion to adopt the meeting agenda as published?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Pierce, to adopt the meeting agenda as published. Any further discussion? Those in favor of adopting the meeting agenda as published, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried? The meeting agenda is adopted. I had mentioned earlier that community comment would come up fairly quickly, and here we are. And so we're going to go to folks in the audience first that have a concern they want to address with the council, and then we're going to turn to the virtual world to see if anybody is joining us there. And then our city manager is going to respond to any community comments that were made at the prior meeting, which is our normal practice. So, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Ralph Sickert. I live at 4311 Cornelia Circle. Last September's final council meeting resulted in a projected 17% increase in general property tax levy for 2026. That's not news to the council, and, one would hope, it's not news to residents. This past month, Manager Neil finally shared that he's targeting something below 10% for the 2026 general levy. Mr. Neil's target rings hollow. It's hollow because, as Mr. Neil has stated numerous times since December, his focus is the general levy, not the overall tax burden on residents. Unfortunately, his words have become actions, actions taken by both he and the council. In June, the council gave final approval to terminate six city staff and outsource Edina's property tax assessing department to Hennepin County, an initiative which will eventually reduce Edina's general levy by $1 million, only to see that cost passed on to residents via Hennepin County property taxes. In July, the council gave so-called preliminary approval to issue a $9 million bond to be paid via a special levy, a rarely-used mechanism to tax residents. In this case, it will add roughly $1 million a year above and beyond the general levy. And later this evening, council will likely give final approval to a $1.2 million increase to the fees added to every customer's Excel and CenterPoint and utility bill, dollars to be used for Edina's street repair, costs previously funded via the general levy. None of these three actions save taxpayers a dime. As a resident, I care about my entire tax burden, no matter which pocket or whose pocket the money is taken from. But for the average resident, this is hard to follow. So let me share a simple story overheard at a North Dakota cafe. Oli goes to the local bank to make his $400 monthly mortgage payment. When he arrives, Scotty, the bank manager, says, "Oli, I can reduce your monthly payment to the bank by half. All you need to do is sign this paperwork." Oli says, "That would be awesome. I'll talk to Lena right away." Oli shares the paperwork with Lena, who diligently reads the 300 pages and then turns to Oli and says, "Oli, Scotty's right. If we sign this, our monthly payment to the bank will be reduced in half." Fabulous, says Oli. Not fabulous, says Lena. Instead of paying the bank, we'd have to pay the other half to his brother's bank in Wisconsin. Whereupon, Oli says, "So Lena, you mean we won't be saving $200 a month?" My question tonight is, when will the council send a strong message, a united message, that 2026 and 2027 are not just about the optics of the general levy? To me, August feels a little late.
Thank you, Mr. Sickert. Thank you for maintaining the clock time, too. Appreciate that. Anyone else in the audience that wishes to express a concern to the council on a matter that they're interested in? Okay. Let's turn then to the virtual world and see if we've got anybody listening in that wants to speak to the council.
I don't have anyone on the line for community comment at this time.
All right, let's turn to our city manager for response to community comments that were made at the prior meeting and see if there's anything to report. Manager Neil?
Thank you, Your Honor. We had, we had three kind of sets of questions at our last council meeting. First question was around lighting, around Grandview Square. And yes, there has been a reduction in lighting, but the lighting that has been replaced is better lighting, more intense lighting. But the lighting number went from 46 to 28. It's part of the Grandview Square Street Lighting Project Plan. We did this reduction because we were running into tree issues that were obstructing the light, and the existing lights were directly adjacent to a number of trees and blocked by foliage directly across the narrow street, and some were redundant. It's also important, I think, for the council to know, we get just as many, I'd say, complaints about too much light coming from streetlights, and, as we do, not enough light coming from streetlights. So it's important to try to balance this, and we're also trying to balance it from a budget standpoint as well. Second set of questions was around pedestrian safety on Eden Avenue in the Grandview District. This is a question that's come up a number of times before. I think we first want to say we appreciate the concerns that are being expressed. The concerns around safety are real. We are seeing a great deal more traffic on this area, detoured onto this area because of the bridge replacement than we expected, quite frankly. But a number of the ideas that were raised are not possible for us, considering that we have Minnesota State Aid Route requirements that we have to comply with, including some of the suggestions around raised crosswalks or speed bumps we just aren't allowed to do by state law. So we are continuing to recommend that people walk up to the street crossing near Vernon. We asked that they push buttons for flashers, wait for traffic to stop, make eye contact with drivers. These are all the kind of recommendations we give for these flashers, anyway. Final question was whether or not we would be adding more firefighter paramedics in the upcoming budget cycle. And the answer to that is, we are working on our budget proposal. We are trying to figure out how to do that and bring that to you in a way that's both economically stable and sustainable for the future as well. And we'll be doing that at the next council meeting.
Thank you, Manager Neil. Manager Neil's comments prompt any thoughts from councilmembers? Councilmember Rissler?
I will go back and listen to the comments from the previous meeting, but hearing that the reduction in lights went from 46 to 28, when the words that were used was this was going to be replacement, is cause for concern. And if I'm remembering correctly, the resident did say there were areas now that were very dark at night, and they were concerned about being able to walk around and walk pets. And that seems like a very basic concern, and so I'm wondering if we can add more lights, at least go verify what the situation is. And maybe I'll go do that, but I did just want to comment on that.
Councilmember Rissler, members of council, I think what we can pledge to you is that we will, we will go forward with this plan, and we'll see what our, see what, how the light turns out. And if we need more for safety purposes, we'll, we'll come back and, and address that then. And Director Milner?
And I would just add, the lights aren't in yet. They're concerned with dark because it's completely dark. We had to take all the lights out. They just are getting the bases in, so there will not be lights for six to eight weeks yet. So I wouldn't review it at this point. They're not operational.
You have any sense of the illuminating power of the 28 versus the 46 that were there?
We feel a lot of them were blocked by tree foliage. If you look at Google Maps, as an example, but we did it walking. They were in the trees, so we'd have to take trees out to put lights back where they were. So we don't think those were doing much of anything for street lighting, and we felt like they were redundant, like Manager Neil had, had mentioned in that response.
Right.
But we can always add lights later. We know that there's capacity to do it.
Your advice is, let's see how it works once we get the new lights in.
Correct.
See if people still have concerns. Okay. Anything else from, yeah, Councilmember Pierce?
Sticking with the same area, the crosswalk. Now, Manager Neil, you talked about what we're allowed to do on a temporary basis in that area. I understand the suggestion was to walk up to Vernon. And I just wanted to clarify, I drive through all the time, and I actually thought there was a sidewalk on that side, and there actually isn't. And so they were gonna, they're gonna be on a sidewalk all the way to Vernon, they actually would have to cross the street and then walk on that sidewalk, pass the library entrance and the BP to get to the light. On the other side, the sidewalk stops, and then, you know, for pathway, they'd be walking across grass or a lot or something, and then the sidewalk picks up again to go to Vernon. And so is that what we're suggesting?
Yeah. Chad, you want to take a, take a crack at that?
Or am I thinking about it the wrong?
Director Milner, you're, you're talking about on the east side of Vernon, I think.
Yeah, maybe we'll start at Grandview Square, where this crosswalk is. So if you're coming from Grandview Square, use the sidewalk that's on the south side of Eden. There is a sidewalk all the way to Vernon. Then we're asking to use the push buttons in the traffic signal and head kind of to the north towards Jerry's.
Okay.
In that first segment where there's a bus stop and that first entrance into Jerry's, there is a full-size sidewalk there, and that's where most people are going. Now, they're going to Jerry's. So you can now enter the parking lot and go that way. If you continue on Vernon, there is not a sidewalk, and that's a major gap in our system that we're looking for those opportunities to fill with grant money and working with the county. So in our opinion, they can get to Jerry's where we think most of the people were headed using that crosswalk.
I think we want to acknowledge, this isn't a great detour, and it's not what we would like to do ideally, but it's, and it is inconvenient for them, that's, that's for sure.
But in that case, we have committed that we're making some changes. Last time we talked, we were just waiting on.
Yep.
Parts to be delivered or what have you. And then I'd say the same thing for lights. We're committed to make sure that it's lit in a way that residents feel safe, but we want to get in place what should be there, acknowledging that we think the illumination is going to be significantly brighter than what we have, what we had currently.
And balancing the, the light levels so that people who don't like so much streetlight are heard as much as people who want more light.
Okay.
And within our budget as well.
Thank you.
Also, Member Jackson?
Yeah, just to, one last comment, and that's, the people walking their dog will feel that they could see the sidewalk safely. I think that was the comment that stuck in my head, so they could go up and down the curb safely. And, and you would apply standards that would cover that, correct?
Can you repeat that comment?
So one of the, one of the commenters last meeting said that her husband walks the dog, and because it's an older population that lives in Grandview Square, they were concerned that the darkness going up and down the curb to the sidewalk when they're walking the dog would not be safe. And that's the sort of thing that you look at when you're determining whether there's enough light, that getting up and down the curb wouldn't be dangerous because it's dark.
We put lights at every intersection. They should be using the pedestrian ramps because there's trees and signs and other stuff that block the lighting mid-block when you step over a curb. So yes, the lighting at the intersections where the ramps are, and there's no stepovers, are going to be illuminated.
Okay, thank you.
And back to the crosswalk issue, what I understand is that we've got a temporary problem that's significant because of the bridge reconstruction out on Highway 100. And then based on that project being finished, there's going to be some further analysis on what we can do to improve the permanent condition in terms of enhanced safety for pedestrians, if anything.
Yeah, I provided you a list of 10 things we can do at crosswalk. We've done about eight of them. The next two are six-figure kind of traffic signals over the roadway, and I don't know if that's appropriate for that location. So I think we have to address that some people just aren't comfortable with mid-block crossings because we can't change the behaviors of people pulling behind them after they're halfway across a crosswalk. That's almost an enforcement thing, and we just can't be sitting there 24 hours a day. So we will continue to look at it and see if there's things we can do after this interchange project is over, when traffic resumes to its normal location on Vernon and 50th.
Well, what we, what we really got right now, at least on a temporary basis, is a driver behavior problem relative to pedestrians.
Yes.
Bet you'd never have that in California, would you? They're always stopping for pedestrians out there. All right, okay, let's move on. We've got a consent agenda. That didn't mean it cut anybody off if there's any more further dialogue on this issue. Consent agenda, anybody wish to remove an item from the consent agenda on the council? All right. Is there a motion to adopt the items on the consent agenda in a single motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we got, we've got, Member Pierce, we've got, Member Pierce moves. Member Jackson seconds the adoption of the items on the consent agenda in a single motion. Any further discussion? Those in favor of adoption of the items on the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried? Items on the consent agenda are adopted in that motion, and there are quite a few of them. And I'm going to turn to Member Jackson, who wanted to make a couple of observations about some of the items on the consent agenda, and I did as well.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the consent agenda had an appointment of a number of our engaged residents, and I wanted to thank them for their service. So Jerry Gilligan and Jeff Huggett are going to continue to serve on the Edina Housing Foundation. Thank you, gentlemen. Richard Miller, we are appointing to the Minnehaha Watershed District Board of Managers, and I want to thank him for stepping up and serving our community. And Bernadette Piacec Lanes is going to be on our Arts and Culture Commission. So thank you to her. So thank you all of you for continuing to serve our community.
Thanks to that, Councilmember Jackson. Just a couple of quick observations. I've been, over time, the work that our Sustainability Director has done and our grant writer, it's, it's been pretty phenomenal. And so to know that we're going to be the first city in the state of Minnesota to convert our heavy equipment fleet to biodiesel, where it really didn't make much sense to try to do it on an electrified basis, but to know that we're going to be able to reduce 90% of our greenhouse gases produced by that equipment, by this conversion, is, is pretty cool. And so we got this biodiesel B-100 fuel supply tank on the consent agenda tonight, and of course, it's all supported by a grant from the Department of Commerce, I think, for, what, Manager Neil, $163,000, which is great. Then we've got that conversion going on of the equipment as well. And then from the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, we got a really nice grant for eight new shade structures for the park that we're creating, Fred Richards, the old Fred Richards Golf Course, for $500,000. And then we got another grant to assist with ash tree removal for almost $134,000. So kudos to all those on staff that are working on securing grants and observing where opportunities are available and, and getting in the mix for selection processes. So there's three nice grants there totaling, you know, close to three-quarters of a million dollars. So that's, that's terrific. I also wanted to thank Jerry Gilligan and Jeff Huggett for serving on the, being interested and continuing to serve on the Edina Housing Foundation because they do some good work, and they're very valuable with the skillsets that they bring. All right, we've got, we're going to move on to the next portion of the agenda now, which is the Special Recognitions and Presentations portion of the agenda. We've got two matters in this portion of the agenda. One is the Safe and Equitable Mobility Action Plan update. Andrew Cipione has that matter, and then we're going to also address our Quality of Life Survey results for 2025, and that'll be up next. So, Mr. Cipione, you're welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Happy to be here to provide an update on our work on the Safe and Equitable Mobility Action Plan. So this plan started with the adoption of the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, which established the Safe Streets and Roads for All Program, or SS4A. The goal of this program is to prevent roadway fatalities and serious injuries. Through this program, there is $5 billion available for, over a five-year period, for planning, demonstration, and implementation of projects that support that goal. However, through this program, an agency needs to have an adopted safety action plan. And although the city has an Active Routes to School Plan, Living Streets Plan, Ped and Bike Master Plan, none of those meet the federal requirements for a safety action plan through this legislation. So the city thankfully was able to get a $200,000 grant through this program in order to develop that safety action plan. We also received a $50,000 grant from MINDOT to help cover our local match that's required as part of that grant. The objectives of this plan are, as I mentioned before, to reduce fatalities and serious injuries on all roadways within our community, to review existing guidance and policies we have related to traffic safety, incorporate equity considerations into those decisions, reevaluate the multimodal infrastructure needs of our community, and to increase our grant funding opportunities for infrastructure projects. Because this project is being funded by a federal grant, there are certain components of the plan that we're required to have. One of those is what they call a leadership commitment. Council may recall, at your last meeting, you adopted Resolution 2025-83, in which the city committed to a goal of zero traffic deaths and serious injuries on all of our roadways by 2050, and an interim goal of a 50% reduction by 2035. And I'll get into where our numbers are in, for traffic fatalities and serious injuries in a little bit. The plan also requires a group that is charged with the oversight of development, implementation, and monitoring of that safety action plan. So with our consultant partners at Alliant, Humanized Minnesota, and Tool Design, we have assembled a task force. That task force includes several members of Edina City staff, representing engineering, public works, community engagement, DEI, police, fire, and community health. We also have representatives from the Transportation Commission and from Edina Public Schools. Because this plan relates to all roadways within Edina, not just the local roadways, we also have members of our task force that represent Hennepin County, Metro Transit, and Minnesota Department of Transportation. Safety analysis is a key component of this plan. We started by looking at all crashes reported in the city of Edina over a 10-year period. So this is 2015 to 2024. In that time period, we experienced 6,438 total crashes. On average, that's about one every 14 hours occurs in the city of Edina. And you can see the breakdown here by property damage, only minor and possible injury, and fatal and serious injury crashes. One thing that I think is worth noting here is that thankfully, we have a relatively low rate right now of serious and fatal injury crashes, but we do see a serious injury crash roughly every two months in our community, and we see a fatality on average every two and a half years. We also then break down that safety data by roadway classification, so looking at our local roadways, county, and state, and you can see the breakdown there based on severity of crash. And we also look at crashes based on mode. So as you can imagine, the majority of our crashes do involve motor vehicles only, about 6,300. And of those crashes, only 1% result in a serious and fatal injury, a fatality or a serious injury. When it comes to bicycle crashes, that fatality and serious injury rate jumps up to 4%, and the minor and possible injury rate is about 90%. And then when it comes to pedestrian crashes, the minor and possible injury rate is 77%, but the fatal and serious injury rate is 18%. This process also requires significant community engagement. We created a page on our Better Together website to get feedback from the community early on as far as where are the issues that they see as they're traveling throughout the community, what are the traffic safety improvements that they would like the city to consider. Through our online survey, we received over 200 submissions from the community. Our online interactive map had about 50 pins placed on it. We also held five pop-up events at various community events throughout the summer, and we planned those events to try and hit at least one quadrant of the city. We're also looking at developing a community profile based on key indicators of social vulnerability. So this includes looking at community characteristics like age, race, disability status, income, and vehicle access. The map up here shows census data that displays the percentage of households in Edina with no vehicle access by census block. And you can see there are some census blocks in the community where as many as one out of three people do not have access to a vehicle. The goal here is to accumulate, create cumulative equity score for each of those census blocks, similar to the PACS equity criteria that we use for scheduling projects that are funded through the PACS fund. And then we will use that cumulative equity score to inform our project prioritization. Our consultants also looking at existing policies, plans, and processes that we have in place related to traffic safety. So they're looking at the guiding documents shown here, Living Streets, Ped and Bike Master Plan, our comprehensive plan, the Active Routes to School Plan, our Climate Action Plan. They're looking at guidance we have related to roadway design, other safety policies, projects that are identified in these plans, and the processes we have for implementation and funding. The next steps in this process, we're currently reviewing the results of our community engagement. We plan to review those with our task force at our meeting that's coming up next month. We're working on completing the other deliverables, including the safety and equity analysis I mentioned before, in addition to starting to develop strategy and project selection. We expect that a draft of this plan will be available by the end of this year. We expect to post that on our Better Together page for additional community feedback, as well as hold a public open house to solicit more community feedback on that plan. I expect to be back before you in early 2026 to ask you to adopt the final Safe and Equity Mobility Action Plan. And once that plan is adopted, then we will start the process of applying again through the SS4A program for funds to implement projects that are recommended in that plan. So I thank you for your time, and I'll take any questions that you may have.
Yeah, there may be questions. Let me go to my colleagues. Member Rissler?
I'm all for safe streets. I think it is so important. And one of the things that keeps me up at night is thinking about things that we may approve, and they end up not necessarily following what is in our code and could have a negative impact on safety. And I can point to a specific example of this. There was the landscaping plan for 4404 on Valley View Road, and it includes spruce trees in the boulevard that is for Oaklawn. And so as you're going down, it's where Oaklawn, 62nd, and Valley View intersect. As you're going down Oaklawn, in the boulevard, there are these two spruce, and they're going to get bigger and bigger, and I've already heard from residents concerned that you can't see pedestrians and bicyclists as they're going down Valley View. And so there, there was criticism from the very beginning, like, why did you approve the spruce trees? And I just only recently discovered that in our code, it says you can't put spruce trees in the boulevard. And so it's hard to be in a position where you inadvertently approve something that you really shouldn't, but at the same time, doing the additional work to find out whether it is in violation is really a heavy lift. And so it would be great if we could be confident that, you know, we are following code and we're getting the information when we make the decisions, and we have a more thorough analysis of what comes before us, so we don't inadvertently undermine these efforts. So I just wanted to say that. And I don't know if there's anything we can do to systematically ensure that when projects come before ensure that when projects come before us, there aren't aspects of them that are counter to code and counter to safety. That's, I don't know.
What I can say is that, I didn't mention it, but as part of that policy and process review, our consultant is looking at sections of our city code that relate to traffic safety items. I'd have to check with them. I'm not sure if the boulevard tree section was included, but there certainly is a lot of connection there between, both for traffic calming and for visibility of pedestrians, bicyclists, transit riders, motorists. So that's, thank you for bringing that up, and that's something we will consider.
Thank you.
Right, yeah. Councilmember Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So two questions. First of all, I believe we have a plan that we're looking at all the crosswalks and everything to make them accessible, and that's been underway for a while as we're redoing sidewalks. Has that plan been folded into this, or how is that? I didn't see it on the list of documents you were referring to when you looked at creating the safety action plan.
The, I believe you're referring to our ADA transition plan?
Yes.
That certainly is related to this. All of the facilities that we would propose as part of this plan would be required to be ADA compliant.
Can you take the work that we've already done and fold it into this, is my question, as well as, you know, we want it to be ADA accessible, but we've done quite a bit of work already, and can that, because I think that's a big source of danger. If you're slower, or if you're using devices to cross the street, you're more vulnerable. So...
We're still doing the inventory.
Okay.
Big city, lots of sidewalks, lots of ADA ramps. We're continuing to try to do quadrants of this inventory.
Okay.
And then from there, work plans and work orders are put in based on staffing levels and budgets and stuff like that. So that's more of a, that's an operational thing that's happening already. There's really not a document that you referenced around ADA and the transportation side, other than these standards that are in the industry.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
Yep.
And then my second question is, how reliable do we think these funds are in the Infrastructure Act? Do you think they'll be around by the time we've got our plan put together?
So the sunset date on the current IIJA is 2026. So at this point, we feel confident that we will be able to apply for funds in 2026 for construction projects. Beyond then, it's up to the legislature to decide whether or not they want to continue that program and continue that funding, but for now, we're hoping for the best in 2026.
Okay, thank you.
Really a laudable goal here. It's Vision Zero that was, I think, first talked about at length by Secretary Buttigieg at USDOT, and we think about the fact that we kill 40,000, 50,000 people a year nationwide on our surface transportation system. So there's really some important work to do. We've had, I think from your data, four fatalities in the last two and a half years, and I couldn't tell from the data that you provided where those fatalities occurred, if they were on local streets, or they were on trunk highways, they're running through our town, because you had data as to the percent of serious accidents and injuries that were occurring in multiple locations. So what can you tell us about those fatalities that we've had?
To clarify, it was four fatalities over a 10-year period.
A 10-year...
So on average, that relates to, that equates to about one fatality every two and a half years.
All right.
Of those four fatalities, I recall, one was on a county road, one was on France Avenue. I believe two of them were on state highways, and one was on a local roadway.
The one on the local roadway was the most recent one, where the little girl went out into the street on her trike. Is that, does that count as a traffic fatality?
The most recent one that I'm aware of was on County Road. It was on France Avenue.
Okay. All right. Anyone else have any further comments or questions for Mr. Cipione? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Louis. Yeah, we're fully supportive here, so continue the good work, you and your team. All right, we've got, the next matter in this portion of the agenda is a report out on the Quality of Life Survey work that has been done. We've been doing it for, what, Director Benner, about 16 years, and we've had, every other year, we do the study, and you've got results over a 16-year period. And I want to turn to you now to introduce the topic, and then we've got Jason Newmeyer here with, not here with us, I guess virtually here with us, from Polco, who's going to give a presentation, a brief presentation on the results of that survey, so.
Thank you, Mayor Hovland. It has been my pleasure to work on Edina's Quality of Life Survey since 2011. We have done that survey in odd-numbered years. When we first started doing these statistically valid surveys, we worked with a local company at that time, that company was called Decision Resources. It's now called Morris Leatherman. After a few surveys using that company, we made a switch from telephone surveys to mailed-in written surveys to provide more anonymity, and because research showed that surveys completed over the phone tend to get a response that's more positive in nature than neutral or, in fact, negative. So we have worked with Polco since then. Early on, that company was called the National Research Center. Polco has acquired that company as one of its lines of business, and we've been with them since. We started work on the 2025 survey last fall, in the fall of 2024, and it is my pleasure tonight to introduce Jason Newmeyer from Polco, who will talk about the survey, the survey methodology, and the key findings of the survey. With that, please welcome Jason Newmeyer.
Welcome, Mr. Newmeyer. Look forward to hearing your presentation.
Great, thank you so much. I'm very happy to be here. As was said, my name is Jason Newmeyer. I am the Survey Research Director at Polco and National Research Center, and I'm pleased to be here to present a summary of these results from the 2025 Edina Quality of Life Survey. I do want to, before I begin, on behalf of myself and my Polco coworkers, extend a thank you to Jennifer, who was our primary contact for us throughout the survey development and implementation process. She provided thoughtful and detailed feedback from start to finish on the survey itself, on the report of results, and on this presentation deck. So with that, a little bit about who we are before we share some of the results. So Polco is an online community engagement polling platform that provides local governments with resident and employee feedback. Today, hundreds of organizations nationwide use Polco for strategic planning, for budgeting, and for empowering resident voices. As was said before, Polco actually merged with the National Research Center in 2019. The National Research Center is best known for our national benchmarking surveys, such as the National Community Survey, the National Employee Survey, and the Community Assessment Survey for Older Adults, among other custom surveys like we completed here in Edina. Since 1994, we've worked with hundreds of jurisdictions nationwide, working to develop the largest benchmark database of local government sentiment in the United States. You can also see here that Polco partners closely with ICMA and the National League of Cities, as well as many other local government leaders, like the Alliance for Innovation, the Engage Local Government Leaders, and many, many academic partners, including the American Association for Public Opinion Research, the University of Wisconsin-Madison, the Hoover Institute at Stanford University, and, most recently, the Harvard Kennedy School of Government. So this is the eighth time that Edina has conducted its Quality of Life Survey with us. All households within the city were eligible to participate in this most recent survey. A list of all households within the zip codes serving Edina was purchased based on updated listings from the United States Postal Service, and then using GIS boundary files provided by the city, addresses located outside of Edina's boundaries were removed from the potential list of households to serve it. So from that list, 2,000 addresses were randomly selected to receive the survey invitation. Those 2,000 randomly selected households received mailings beginning on April 7th, and the survey remained open for six weeks. The first mailing was a postcard inviting the household to participate in the survey online. The next mailing contained a cover letter with instructions, the survey questionnaire, and a postage-paid return envelope. And then the third and final mailing was another survey packet, providing residents with one final opportunity to participate. A total of 451 completed surveys were received from these efforts, providing a response rate of 24% and a margin of error of plus or minus 5%. Of those 451 completed surveys, 281 were completed on paper, and 170 were completed Now, at Polco, we have a benchmarking database that includes survey data from more than 400 communities across the country. This database includes responses from communities who have conducted our National Community Survey or a custom resident survey, such as Edina's, within the past three years. This allows jurisdictions to compare ratings of services to ratings of similar services from other communities, and we'll highlight those comparisons here through the rest of this presentation. So next, we'll turn to some high-level results and some comparisons before we dive into our detailed key findings that our survey research and data science teams helped to develop in the report. So 78 items were available for national benchmark comparisons in this most recent survey. A higher rating indicates that the result was at least 10 points above the benchmark, while a much higher rating would be indicative of an average rating that's more than 20 points above the benchmark. Likewise, a lower rating is any item which has scored at least 10 points below the rolling national average. Items that rated much higher than the national average in Edina include the overall opportunities for education and enrichment, K-12 education, public places where people want to spend time, shopping opportunities, snow removal, and adult educational opportunities. Additionally, 35 other items scored at least 10 points above the national benchmark. You can see here that there was one item that scored below our rolling national averages, and this was in relation to the question on what impact you think the economy will have on your family income in the next six months. 78 items were also available for comparisons to Minnesota communities. For most of these items, comparisons could be made to about 30 other communities found in Minnesota. In many cases, Edina ranks number one when compared with other Minnesota communities, including for shopping opportunities, the overall quality of business and service establishments, snow removal, public places people want to spend time, ambulance or emergency services, the overall opportunities for education and enrichment, and adult educational opportunities. Just to reiterate, Edina was the top community among around 30 in Minnesota in each of those items that I just listed. Now, we have national comparisons, we have statewide comparisons, and we have comparisons to yourself. So when compared to results from 2023, there were 204 items available for trends. The margin of error for comparisons between these two most recent surveys is plus or minus 6%. So 22 items received more positive ratings over the past two years. Those with some of the largest increases include sidewalk maintenance, providing a safe and secure environment for all, residents of all backgrounds, storm drainage, and street repair. Those top items that rated more negatively or lower in 2025 include the availability for housing for lower-income families, the availability for housing for lower-income singles, drinking water, sewer services, and overall economic health in the city. As you'll notice throughout the rest of this presentation, we're going to indicate areas where Edina exceeded national or state benchmarks, and where statistically significant changes have occurred between the 2023 and 2025 surveys. All right, so with that, I'd like to move next into some of the highlights of our findings. I want to point out a few items that stood out to us as survey researchers. Now, there's a lot of additional data in the full report that we won't cover tonight, but the rest of this presentation will focus on a few areas that we found to be most noteworthy within the survey results. So key finding number one, Edina residents continue to enjoy a high quality of life. Residents continue to rate their quality of life highly, with 92% of survey respondents awarding excellent or good marks in 2025. This rating was higher than our national benchmark and similar to peer communities in Minnesota. As you can see here on the slide, this rating is similar to results dating back about a decade, with the overall quality of life rating holding steady between 92 and 98% from 2015 through 2025. The quality of several broad categories of community livability were also evaluated on the survey. About 9 in 10 residents positively rated the health and wellness opportunities in Edina, the quality of overall natural environment, and the overall opportunities for education and enrichment. Meanwhile, about 8 in 10 gave excellent or good ratings to the overall economic health, established built environment, the image or reputation, and the overall neighborliness of residents. Each of these ratings were similar to 2023, aside from the overall economic health of Edina, which decreased seven points from 2023, from 90% to the current rating of 83%. Edina residents rated several community characteristics higher than both the national and Minnesota averages, including opportunities for education and enrichment, health and wellness opportunities, and even with the decrease, the overall economic health of Edina scored above national and Minnesota benchmarks. In addition to rating overall community characteristics, residents were also asked to rate several, to rate several of the individual characteristics within the community. As in previous years, you can see here that the highest-rated individual aspects were cleanliness, shopping opportunities, recreational opportunities, and the overall quality of business and service establishments. Other very well-rated aspects were K-12 education, fitness opportunities, and public places where people want to spend time. You can see the corresponding relationship to the national and state benchmarks here with the stars on the screen, with shopping opportunities, recreational opportunities, the overall quality of business and service establishments, and K-12 education scoring above both comparison levels. And then finally, above and beyond these broader measures, residents were also asked about their opportunities that they had to be involved in how Edina is run. The opportunity to participate in community matters saw a statistically significant increase of 7% from 2023, returning to levels that have not been seen since 2019. Additionally, we saw a 10% increase in respondents saying yes to the question, other than voting, do you think that if you wanted to, you could have a say in about how things are run in this community? Once again, this is a statistically significant increase from 2023, and nearly the highest percentage yes we've seen in the past 10 years. All right, then, key finding number two, ratings for safety continue to receive high marks from residents. When asked about their top reasons for living in the city, 57% of respondents selected that it was a safe community. When asked specifically about safety, nine in 10 residents rated their overall feeling of safety in Edina as excellent or good, a rating on par with both national and Minnesota benchmarks. Residents also rated how safe they felt in three different areas of the community. About nine in 10 residents said they felt very or somewhat safe in their neighborhood and in the downtown area, while about 2/3 felt safe in the Southvale area. Each of these items were similar to the ratings that were given two years ago. Edina residents also rated five additional potential problems related to crime. About 3 in 10 residents felt youth crimes and vandalism, as well as property crime, were moderate, major, or extreme problems, while about 1 in 10 felt that drugs, violent crime, and hate crimes were problematic. You can see on the slide here that these ratings were largely consistent from 2023, with drug-related crimes seeing the lone statistically significant change. Key finding number three, city services continue to be highly rated, but ratings for overall quality of drinking water have decreased since 2023. Edina residents evaluated a number of services provided by the city, as well as the overall quality of city services. Between eight and nine in 10 residents highly rated the overall quality of city services. You can see that that's similar to previous years, while more than nine in 10 residents gave positive ratings to ambulance or emergency medical services, park maintenance, fire services, city parks, and police services. Among the lowest-rated services were land use planning and zoning, which was rated excellent or good by just 57% of residents. Now, when compared to 2023, most service ratings were similar in 2025. However, we did see some increases observed for land use planning and zoning, sidewalk maintenance, storm drainage, and street repair. Now, about six in 10 residents gave excellent or good ratings to the overall drinking, quality of drinking water. You can see that this rating has declined by 11 points since 2023, but remains similar to both national and Minnesota averages. The reliability and safety of drinking water in Edina were rated as excellent or good by at least eight in 10, while nearly 3/4 provided positive evaluations to the water's odor and appearance, and almost 2/3 rated the taste as excellent or good. These items all remained in line with results from 2023, even amid the overall decline in the drinking water rating. Right then, fourth, residents identify opportunities for improving housing options, especially for lower-income residents and first-time homebuyers. We covered the top 2/3 of these tables earlier when we discussed the community characteristics, and as noted at that time, a vast majority of these characteristics received positive evaluations from residents, and most of them exceeded the national and state benchmarks. However, three items scored below 60%, including the variety of housing options, the availability of affordable quality housing, and the call... and the cost of living, which only received excellent or good marks from thirty-five percent of respondents. Residents were also presented with a question on housing and future development in the city. Specifically, the survey asked if there was the right amount, too much, or too little housing for different groups of people. Overall, a majority of residents felt there was too little housing for lower-income singles and lower-income families, sixty-one percent and sixty-six percent. That's shown there in the pink shaded bars on the bottom two rows. Slightly fewer residents felt the same about housing availability for middle-income families and for middle-income singles. And then finally, residents were asked about future housing choices, especially their priorities. How important, if at all, do you think the city, it is for the city to encourage each of the following? About three-quarters of respondents said it was essential or very important for the city to encourage the preservation of small starter homes, homes with fewer rooms or amenities that are affordable for first-time buyers. Around one-third of residents prioritized medium-density housing, and about one-fourth of respondents felt the city should focus on higher-density development, such as apartments. Compared to two years ago, all of these ratings remain consistent, except for the preservation of small starter homes, which saw an eight-point increase in importance since the last survey iteration. And then fifth and finally, residents feel the city of Adana effectively manages taxpayer money, and a majority support increasing tax revenue to preserve current service levels. So in two thousand and twenty-five, residents were asked whether they agreed or disagreed with four statements that related to Adana's management of public finances, specifically regarding taxation and public services. In, or about seven in ten respondents strongly or somewhat agreed that the city effectively manages taxpayer money. Meanwhile, six in ten agreed that the city should raise taxes annually in small increments to cover the rising cost of services, while just three in ten residents supported reducing public services to avoid future tax increases. Residents were also asked about their current level of satisfaction with municipal taxes and services. About half of respondents reported being satisfied with the current level of municipal taxes, while one in four respondents, respondents felt that they paid too much for the services they received. So the survey results suggest that a majority of Adana residents recognize the financial pressures inflation places on maintaining public services. Specifically, six in ten respondents favored increasing tax revenue to preserve current service levels, indicating a general willingness to support additional funding if it helps to sustain the quality and availability of current city services. So once more, here is a summary of the key findings developed by our survey research and data science teams. First and foremost, Adana residents continue to enjoy a high quality of life. Second, ratings for safety continue to receive high marks from residents. Third, city services continue to be highly rated, but we had the decline in drinking water since two thousand and twenty-three. Fourth, residents identify opportunities for improving housing options, and especially focus on lower-income and first-time home buyers. And fifth, residents feel that the city effectively manages taxpayer money, and a majority do support increasing tax revenue to preserve city services. All right, so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about the process, about the report, or about the presentation that we just went through. Thank you so much for your time.
At our city council work session to go over this information in more detail, let me turn now to my colleagues to see if anybody has any questions for you at this point in time.
Member Risher.
Actually, this is more for manager Neil. I am wondering how how residents can access this survey. It's in the work session packet, it's not in the council packet. Is it online on the city?
It will be online. I'm not sure when we'll have it up, but we have posted all of our other surveys online in their entirety, so people have the ability to see not just the presentation, but also the data as well.
So if you want to read that two hundred and forty-eight report, you will be able to do that.
It's really interesting stuff.
You can find it on the website later this week under information for residents, under the about tab of the city's website.
And Director Benarot, to the extent any of us want a hard copy, some of us that are older, that are more tactile, I'd like a hard copy of it, please.
I can make that happen for you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else who wants a hard copy, let, let Director Benarot, no, I'm going to turn now to member Pierce.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Newmeyer, thanks again for the thorough presentation. I think it's really important if, and you talked about this in the beginning of your presentation, but it would be great to just call out those aspects of how you ensure that the information that we get is statistically sound, especially given that your organization has done the survey for the last eight cycles.
Yeah, thank you for that question. So the validity of any probabilistic survey like this is all based on the sampling that we do. So all households within Adana had a known probability of being selected as part of this, and that allows us to calculate that margin of error that we shared. So we can be confident that ninety-five out of a hundred times if this was repeated under similar conditions, our results would be within plus or minus five percent. This is the gold standard for sampling and for survey, and this is the same probabilistic style that we included and did for the last five iterations.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Newmeyer or for Director Benarot at this point in time? Director Benarot, we also join Mr. Newmeyer, thanking you for leading this effort. There are general sort of surveys that can be taken, and I think some cities choose to do that. We have specific issues that we want to get at because we want to keep improving the quality of life, making our town a better and better place every day. So, and you were foresightful enough to know what some of those issues were, and and ask Mr. Newmeyer and Polco to make sure they address those issues in the survey, and I thank you for that.
It's my pleasure.
We all thank you for that, so. All right, let's move on now to the, that completes that portion of the agenda. We've got one public hearing matter this evening, and for those that are with us, during COVID and post-COVID, we've been handling public hearings in a little different manner for the most part. Some of the more routine matters, we may make a decision the same night as a public hearing, but in this case, and in most cases now, we've been deferring that decision to the following meeting, so council, council members have a little bit more time for thought, based on the testimony that they've heard and the information that's been supplied by our residents. We also give our residents a little bit of additional time, based on the public hearing this evening, to be able to write in and supplement any comments they have or create new comments for us. And then we'll take the matter up at our, if we follow the advice of our staff, we'll take it up at our next council meeting, which will be on August nineteenth. So I'm now going to turn to Emily DelRimpel, our assistant city planner, and we've got a, we've got a, quite a representative group here from the automobile manufacturer Rivian. You've got, we've got Hannah, why don't you folks just stand up quickly, and I mentioned your name, Hannah Wu, with design manager Rivian. Samuel Moon, regional development lead for Rivian. Matt McAdoo, the lead specialist on safety operations and manufacturing at Rivian. And Madison Grothaus, senior architect for Res Tark Design Studio, thank you for being here. And then I think we have somebody available online as well, Kevin Felner, senior lead, real estate and commercial facilities. We welcome you to Mr. Felner, if you are indeed there. So that saves Ms. DelRimpel the challenge of introducing all these folks from Rivian, and we'll have you introduce yourselves again when you come up to to speak about your notion here at the Galleria. We'll let our staff make their presentation first, and Ms. DelRimpel, did you indicate to the folks from Rivian, the applicant, how much time they would have to make their presentation? Around ten, ten fifteen minutes? Okay, all right, very good. Go ahead.
All right, thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Rivian, an electric vehicle company, is proposing to occupy tenant space at the Galleria Mall at thirty-five-ten Galleria. A small vehicle showroom, about thirty-two hundred square feet, would be located within the mall. Additionally, up to six vehicles would be available for test drives and would be stored within existing parking, parking areas at the mall. Customers could place an order for new vehicles on-site. However, for-sale vehicle inventory would not be stored at the property, and purchased vehicles would be shipped directly to the customer. The subject property is owned P C D three and is guided in the comprehensive plan as community activity center. The P C D three zoning district lists automobiles or automobile agencies selling new unused vehicles as conditionally permitted uses. A conditionally permitted use is a land use that the city allows in a zoning district when the applicant meets certain standards as laid out in the city zoning code. The proposed tenant space is located on the west side of the Galleria. Within the space, the applicant is showing that they will have a couple vehicles on display, some seating areas, a few retail racks, break room, and office space. The project will also include some interior changes to the storefronts within the Galleria Mall, and other than tenant signage, and two new E V chargers. No changes are proposed to the exterior of the building. The applicant is showing the location of where the test drive vehicles will be parked on-site. Two of the parking spots that are, will be available for the Rivian vehicles are on-grade, and four of the, four spots are under the mall. There are currently four E V charging stations, and it's the intent of the owner, the applicant, that two of those existing chargers would be converted to Rivian chargers, and two additional E V chargers would be added. The applicant has also provided some visual examples of southern, or similar showrooms that they have currently. And this one's in Ventura, Florida, in New York, and also in California. So the reason the application is in front of you tonight is for a conditional use permit for the automobile agency, which is a conditional use in the P C D three zoning district. The code doesn't distinguish this type of use from a traditional car dealership, and therefore, a conditional use permit is required. The pyramid of discretion is in front of you here, and the conditional use permits are in yellow and are limited to guidance that is within the zoning ordinance and within the conditional use permit criteria. There are not specific use standards for automobile agencies that are outlined in the code, but the council must find that certain conditions be met to grant a conditional use permit. Those conditions are that the establishment, maintenance, and operation of use does not have an undue adverse impact on facilities, utilities, or services, will generate traffic that's within the capacity of the street serving the property, does not have an adverse undue impact on public health, safety, or welfare, will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of other property within the vicinity, conforms to applicable restrictions and special conditions of the district which it's located, and is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Staff outlined some findings that within a showroom, within a showroom of thirty-two hundred square feet and just six vehicles that are available for test drives, the scale of the proposed use is very small and is not likely to have any noticeable impact on government facilities, utilities, services, or any of the existing proposed improvements. Those existing improvements would be similar or not very different from any of the other retail tenants within the Galleria Mall. Given the scale of the proposed use, there would not be any noticeable difference in traffic than there would be for any other retail tenant, and there is adequate capacity on adjacent roads to support the proposed use. The use will not have an undue adverse impact on public health, safety, or welfare. The use will have no impact on the normal and orderly development and improvement on other property within the vicinity, and the use conforms to the applicable restrictions and special conditions of the planned commercial district, zoning district, and since the proposed use would provide education and greater access to electric vehicles that would support E V adoption, staff finds the proposed use is consistent with the goals of the comprehensive plan. The planning commission held a public hearing on July twenty-third and recommended approval with an eight-to-one vote of the conditional use permit with the conditions that are outlined in the staff report. And with that, tonight, council is asked to hold the in-person public hearing and close the public input at noon on Sunday, August tenth, and continue action to the August nineteenth city council meeting. As Mayor Hovland introduced, there are applicant representatives here tonight from Rivian, and Dave E. Miller, the fire marshal, is also here to answer any questions the city council might have.
All right, very good. And was there a staff recommendation here as well?
To approve.
To approve, okay, all right. Do we want to hear any of the concerns of the fire marshal or his comments before we proceed with the applicant, or what would you prefer?
Do you have specific questions for the fire marshal?
Not at this point in time, okay. All right, yeah, member Risher may have one.
I do think just in terms of us understanding everything, it would be helpful for us to, and the public, to hear what the fire marshal's concerns are or what, you know, he is recommending for this project before we hear from the developer.
Yep, why don't you come forward, and we'll expect you and Rivian will be prepared to address these concerns that were raised.
Mr. Mayor, council members, appreciate you allowing me to speak tonight to you. My name is Davey Miller. I am your fire marshal here in Adana. I do have some initial concerns over an E V showroom going inside a space such as the Galleria Mall. We don't currently have, that I can identify in Minnesota, E V showrooms that exist in any indoor malls at this time. So this would be kind of a first of its kind here in Minnesota. We know that the current data that's out there shows that the frequency of E V fires is relatively low that compared to normal or traditional internal combustion vehicles. But it is a hazard that we would be introducing to a space that doesn't currently have that hazard. The Galleria Mall does currently have chargers in that underground parking space that does exist right now. Those went in a number of years ago, and they haven't had any incidents thus far. But fire code is, or code in general, is slow to adapt. We're working currently out of the two thousand and eighteen fire codes, or a number of years behind, and oftentimes, code is reactive, not proactive when it comes to incidents. So it tends to change because there is a pattern of of issues. So the recommended, recommendations that I provided, mainly three of them, one including an upgraded sprinkler system in the tenant space that would allow for more water output of the sprinklers in that area if there was a fire due to those, that increased hazard that's being brought into the space that doesn't currently exist. The fire protection engineer that was hired by Rivian did also recommend this in their review of the space. The other recommendation I had was placement of the vehicles and placement for response sake, if you will. The thing with electric vehicles versus traditional vehicles is that the fire, the hazards are different than we traditionally are exposed to on those fires. And that is that a traditional internal combustion engine, we can put those fires out pretty quickly, and we can walk away from them without risk of reignition typically. With the E V fires, what we're tending to find is that with that stored energy in those batteries, that those incidents tend to last not minutes like traditional vehicles, but hours, and in some instances, weeks, where that they'll reignite later in junkyard. So the tactics that we end up having to employ to fight those fires isn't having that sprinkler system put the fire out, which typically would happen in most scenarios, but the batteries are under the car, so that water isn't being applied to the batteries from the sprinkler system. The system is just containing the fire from spreading to other parts of the building, right? And so with that, the sprinkler system would be helpful, but we have to bring those cars out of those spaces to either let them continue to enter into thermal runaway or propagate until the, the energy is expelled, or we have to manipulate the car in a way that we can actually apply the water to where it needs to be cooled, which is the underside of the car, which isn't very accessible to us. So sprinklers are one thing. Location of those vehicles, nearest exits would be ideal, or having that sprinkler system at least present to help control the fire. So when we do get in there, we have some time to remove those vehicles to a safe place away from the building to slow further damage. That recommendation of placement also had a, an exterior door into the tenant space, which would allow easier extra, extraction of that car or those showroom cars if they did end up in an event. This, I would imagine, would also provide an easier way for those cars to be brought into the mall on that quarterly basis that they're expecting to be exchanging these cars. And then my third recommendation is a recommendation that Rivian also agreed with, which was the thirty percent max charge of those batteries that are going to be in the showroom itself. So there is a FM global data sheet that noted batteries that are in a charged state of zero to thirty percent are, are in a state of zero to 30% um, are, are in a state that is hard to get into thermal runaway, which is kind of our big concern as, uh, the fire service. So, uh, keeping it there and being able to regulate that would be, uh, useful on our end. So, new hazards to the space that don't currently exist, um, and, and it's a different hazard, right? It's a longer term hazard for if the event actually does occur, that we end up having to take lots of time to try and figure out how to drag a car either through the mall or out to a garage door that might be out that, uh, exterior wall of the mall. So, uh, those are my concerns and kind of the, the reasoning for them.
Okay, good, well articulated. Member Risher?
Just one follow-up question. When the EV chargers were allowed to go into that lower level space, um, was there analysis by you about whether cars could be pulled? Are they accessible with fire? Could you pull them out?
Where they are currently located, it's on the west lower wall of the Galleria. Um, some of them are line, in line with the aisles of the, um, the parking rows, so those might be relatively easy to get out of there. Uh, the other option for that space would be to extend the sprinkler system, that OH2 that I talked about, out into cover those eight, eight charging spaces. It would provide then the Galleria chargers that appropriate coverage to reduce it, um, and also, uh, give us time, right? It's, it's all about time for us. Slowen the fire spread. Uh, the new code we will be adapting in 2026, the 24 edition will be, uh, does include some sprinkler, uh, changes for parking structures similar to the Gallerias right now where, uh, that, uh, a sprinkler system, a full sprinkler system for the whole structure, uh, would be required, so.
Member Risher, go ahead.
Final question. Um, I've noticed other places when they put in their EV chargers, they tend to be kind of at the periphery of parking lots. You see grocery stores with that. We did not do that here at City Hall. We didn't model that and I'm just kind of wondering, you know, is pulling the chargers away from the building something that would be advisable?
So, um, it kind of goes into the, the level of charge, right? Charging is one of the hazards of EV batteries and the causes, uh, one of the causes of those fires. Uh, the greater hazard would be level three chargers, which are the fast charges. So, um, if those are further away from the building, even the ones we have here are far enough away that I wouldn't be worried about the building itself, uh, being involved in that. It would just be smoke mitigation and that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Yeah.
That prompts any other question? Member Pierce?
I just had a, a question. You just covered the parking, um, structures, uh, but if we go back to the showroom, um, the, just looking at the rendering, it seemed like the two vehicles would be, um, on a typical, um, structure that's elevated. Um, at least that's what it looked like to me. And so my question, if the, the issue is the batteries are underneath the vehicle, um, why we wouldn't try to deploy some kind of suppression system underneath the vehicle, whether it's misting or, um, you know, some type of foam, um, and still have it be triggered just like the, uh, the standard system would be? It seems like we'd be able to do that.
That is one of the techniques that, uh, is being tried out, uh, around the world really, uh, as this problem is, is kind of everywhere. So, um, yeah, sprinklers that are applied from the underside, misting systems, uh, there is, uh, firefighting apparatus that I've seen out there that are kind of roll under sprinklers that you could attach to a fire hose, uh, that sort of thing. So, um, options are there, yes, absolutely, so.
Certainly wouldn't be against, um, doing something a little bit more progressive. Um, maybe you recommend we should do both, I don't know. Uh, but I was just curious if you had any experience with those types of systems, because I, I have read that they do exist.
Uh, I have not personally been involved in them, but I have seen them out there as well.
Okay, thank you.
Um, these recommendations also, uh, the locations of them and the OH2 are recommendations that I provide to any new building that's going into town, uh, that plans on having EV chargers in there, right? The code doesn't dictate EV chargers right now. I'm not even, uh, usually brought into the picture when they, when people are putting them in. State inspectors are involved in that. Um, but thus far I've had good luck with, uh, new buildings, our new apartment buildings that are doing it. Uh, they're all willing to put the vehicles nearest the exit and upgrade those systems to OH2, knowing that that code change is coming, so.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question for Ms. Dalrymple. Um, so if we, um, how do we ensure that, um, Rivian only has six cars to test drive at any one time? Who would enforce that?
Well, it's a conditional of the, a condition of the conditional use permit, so if there are concerns, we can go out and take a look at how many vehicles are stored on site.
Okay, so that'd be a reported sort of thing. And then similarly, if we were to put conditions about, um, fire safety, um, for, for instance, keeping the charge at only 30%, how would that be enforced?
Uh, right now, we currently require permits for buildings on display inside of building, uh, vehicles on display inside of buildings such as, uh, Southdale Mall occasionally. Uh, I haven't done it in a while, but they'll bring vehicles in and they get permitted so we can ensure that the, the standards are being, uh, met that we, that we are asking for.
So you would check periodically?
Yeah, I think, uh, I think a permit, uh, for every time they swap cards would be reasonable for us to go in and just ensure that the program, the way they're saying the program, programming them, uh, to that max state of charge of 30% and, um, that they're meeting those requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So just to be clear, you had three recommendations and on two of the three recommendations, the upgraded sprinkler system and the 30% max charge, uh, for the cars in the showroom were, uh, conditions that the fire protection engineers that Rivian hired to work with you, uh, acknowledged and recommended as well?
Yes, the, uh, the fire protection engineer actually recommended a different, uh, percentage, but after my conversation with him, uh, he, he directed me to that FM global data sheet that suggests is that, suggests a 30%, which Rivian is, uh, in our meeting, that's the number they produced to me, was 30%.
Okay, and that, that's a level at which, uh, I don't know if it prohibits thermal runway, but it's greatly impeded.
Difficult, yes, difficult to enter into thermal runaway below 30%.
Okay.
So, reduces that risk a little bit, right? We're adding risk, but trying to reduce it the best we can.
And, and as people, and maybe Rivian will answer this question too, but, uh, as people come in and sit in the cars and want to look at the computer systems and electricity is used, uh, you know, the air conditioning is running or the heater is running, uh, how do they get back in that space to a 30% charge?
Uh, I'm sure they will address that as well, but they, uh, from what I understand, they're planning on using a trickle charge, so, uh, relatively low amount of power being applied to those batteries, uh, until they reach their, their max state of charge that they'll set.
Okay, and what I, what I kind of inferred from what you said is that if you're at level one, level or level two charging, you're really not so concerned about charging at that level, it's a, it's a high speed charge at level three.
It just, it brings a new, uh, a new challenge in, in play when you're, when you're packing that energy in fast, right? It just allows for more opportunities for, uh, failure points, so.
Yes. First.
That's just interesting to me. I, if the cars are elevated for showroom purposes, and this is a question for Rivian probably, I don't even know why you need to charge them. Like, why you just couldn't, um, and I'll say it this way, I don't know if this is possible from an engineering perspective, but it's plugged in just like any other light in the showroom so that the features of the car, people can come in and the lights come on and all of that works, but there's actually no batteries that could catch fire in the vehicle in the showroom. And then if people want to do a test drive and see the full functionality, then they go out and they take one, uh, four spin. So, just curious, and you probably don't know the answer to that, why, why we would charge the vehicles to begin with if they're inside and won't be driven, for the most part.
I did pose that question initially, uh, is there an option of having just show test vehicles that don't have the full capacity of batteries in there? Uh, and it didn't sound like that's something they do at this time, so.
Good, thank you. Stand by, there may be more questions, so.
Sounds good, thank you.
Dalrymple as well, and, uh, Rivian team, you want to come on up? I don't know, uh, how you want to make your presentation and please, when you do, whoever is coming up to present a portion of the, or whether you're, maybe you'll be doing the same, the entire presentation, Mr. Moon?
It'll be the, it'll be our team.
Your team, okay. And just have, just make sure you identify yourselves as you come up, just for the record. And then the first presenter can give, are you all coming out of the same, uh, location in California?
Uh, if you are coming out of...
That's my, my name.
Why don't you give your, when you get up to speak, why don't you give your name and your work address?
Sure.
Okay?
Yeah.
So we have that for the record?
Hi Mayor, members of the council and staff. Uh, my name is Sam. I'm, uh, from California, Irvine, uh, 14, if you need the...
Exact address, I'm sorry. Uh, 14-400 Myford Road, Irvine. That's our, where one of our headquarters is located at.
And your, your full name too, for the record?
Yeah, Samuel Moon.
Thank you.
And I'm representing Rivian, uh, this evening. Well, again, good evening Mayor and members of the council and staff. My name is Sam and I'm here with my, my Rivian colleagues today to share a little bit more about Rivian and our excitement, uh, to have our retail presence here in the great community of Edina. Rivian is an automotive, uh, American manufacturer founded in 2009 with the goal of helping to accelerate the global transition to zero emissions transportation. We design, build and sell, uh, electric vehicles along with the software and services that support them. Our vehicles are proudly assembled right here in the United States. Uh, we do have a few different models here, as you can see in your presentation, uh, that are currently on the road. So the R1T, which is our flagship, uh, pickup truck, the R1S, our flagship SUV, and then the Rivian, uh, commercial van or RCV, which we use to electrify delivery fleets for our commercial customers. Our products are sold directly to both individual consumers and commercial clients and we're also looking to the future with our next generation vehicles. What you see here, we have the R2, which is a midsize platform coming in 2026 of next year, which will be followed by the highly anticipated R3 and the R3X. At a glance, we have currently, uh, opened 34 retail sites today across the United States that are within malls, outdoor lifestyle centers and standalone retail, which we'll briefly showcase in our presentation. So thank you again for your time and now I'll pass the presentation over to my colleague Hannah Wu, who will briefly discuss about the program of our showrooms.
All right, thanks, Mr. Moon.
Uh, good evening, my name is Hannah Wu. Um, I am also based out of Irvine and I am the design manager, uh, at Rivian and I'll be walking you through our program. Uh, so our sales program, uh, is comprised of five focuses. One is vehicle education, tactile tools to configure, educational digital touchpoints, community spaces and gear shop and demonstration drives. As Sam mentioned, we have 34, uh, locations open in the United States and Canada. Uh, this one is White Plains and it's, it's pretty similar to what we're proposing in Edina. We have our vehicle displays here, which are static displays. Um, they're just open for customers to come in, enjoy our vehicles, uh, climb inside and touch and feel, uh, what we have to offer. Uh, next we have tactile tools, uh, for configuration, so customers can come in, take a paint palette, um, a tire with, uh, our rim fit outs and just roll them into our vehicle and, uh, just imagine their future Rivian, uh, in, in real time. Next we have educational touchpoints where, uh, customers can come and, uh, learn about EV ownership and charging, uh, to planning your next adventure. Next we have community spaces, we, which we always provide in our spaces for customers to come in with their families, uh, enjoy books, uh, and also any kid-friendly activities. Lastly, we have demonstration drives for, uh, those who want to experience our vehicles in person, uh, and a Rivian employee will always be accompanying, uh, the test drive. All right, I will hand over the mic to my colleague, Matt McAdoo.
Thank you, Ms. Wu. Mr. McAdoo, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, good evening, Mayor, council members. Again, Matt McAdoo, um, I'm based out of Houston, Texas, commercial location, supporting Rivian's commercial spaces. So speaking to you a little bit about fire safety, so, uh, each one of our vehicles is equipped with a battery management system or BMS, um, which, uh, essentially is designed to monitor properties of the battery pack and individual cells. And the BMS utilizes data to proactively identify safety issues, um, and enhance battery performance. Based on inputs such as temperature, resistance, voltage and state of charge, the BMS can activate, um, contactors to isolate the system or control thermal regulation. With that said, um, essentially the BMS, um, is capable of detecting inputs and even damage to diagnose, um, the state of, and the health of the pack, um, and ensure that it's in a safe space. Secondly, thermal runaway, um, a thermal event or runaway, um, of a battery pack on a vehicle, specifically a static display vehicle, um, is extremely unlikely, um, because this typically requires the presence of, um, you know, extreme conditions such as mechanical impact damage, uh, think collisions or puncture of the pack, um, or high voltage testing or charging, which won't be taking place here. So again, stationary vehicles at a low state of charge, um, pose a negligible risk of thermal runaway.
Do you have some data to support that last one, Mr., that last statement on the second column?
Yes, sir, as, as far as the thermal statistics, so, yes, sir.
That stationary vehicle, vehicles that are in a low state of charge, poses a negligible risk of thermal runaway, runaway? You, you must have based that statement on some testing or factual information that you had.
Yes, sir, so, um...
Maybe, and you don't have to give it to me now, but make sure that we have it before the council decides on the 19th.
Okay, yes, sir, sounds good. So speaking on the low state of charge or the 30% or lower SOC, um, charging a vehicle poses a low risk of, uh, initiating a thermal event. Why? Um, again, going back to the battery management system, um, as the engineer controlled, this system prevents the charging of a system with faults or early indicators of battery anomaly. The site will also implement, um, something that would be an administrative control, which is keeping those display vehicles at a maximum of 30% state of charge. Both vehicles will be charged again using a Rivian portable trickle charger, which, um, really is similar to someone, you know, charging their phone or a laptop. With that, um, I'd like to note that the charger on the vehicle itself and the charging cable both have their own diagnostics that can stop a charging session if faults are detected. And so that's also an additional, um, you know, safe piece of mind there. And then fire suppression. So, um, as mentioned earlier, the vehicles do not pose a greater fire risk than an internal combustion engine. Um, in the unlikely event of a fire in our space, Rivian team members will follow their emergency response plans that they are trained to. Um, they will safely evacuate the space and knowing that the best medium, um, for response to an electric vehicle fire is water, uh, the facility space, um, will be sprinkled to local fire code at an OH2 level, which essentially supplies more water, um, to the space per the fire department's recommendation. Um, and lastly, getting into some of the resources that we have to support, um, our vehicles, you know, Rivian will work with local fire departments, police and emergency responders to prioritize safety, um, with Rivian vehicles in emergency situations. And to aid with that, Rivian has published multiple emergency response guides, um, for each vehicle model that guides safe activity around the vehicles, um, and the safe rescue of, you know, passengers, um, found on Rivian's public facing site as well as the National Fire Protection Agency, um, or NFPA's website. With that, so I'll wrap up. Um, just want to reemphasize these intentional, you know, engineering administrative controls that'll be in place, um, that are available to the public, to local, um, first responders and designed into our vehicles, really just our testament as to how important safety is, um, to Rivian. So I'll pass it over to Madison, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McAdoo.
Good evening, my name is Madison Grotheaus. I'm with Reschar Design Studio out of Cincinnati, Ohio, and we are the architect of record for this specific site as well as a number of other Rivian sites that we've worked on. I'm going to dig a little bit further, deeper into the, the... I'm going to dig a little bit further, deeper into the specifics of our design intent here. For the site, we are located on the west side of the property. On the street level, there'll be two dedicated Rivian parking stalls, and those will not be EV charging. You can kind of see that in this highlighted section here. And then at the garage level, we will be replacing the four existing chargers. I know Galleria is planning to provide some additional chargers, but that is not a part of this particular conditional use application. So currently, we're, a few photos just on kind of where those chargers exist right now. And then these are the back of our space. The red line indicates kind of where that demising wall is, where the boundaries of our space are. Our floor plan, as you can see, very minimal footprint. This is not your typical car dealership. And we've, like, we've mentioned 3,200 square feet. The showroom is mostly centered around vehicle education. It has digital and interactive wall displays, a lot of really good programming that Hannah had mentioned earlier as well. The finishes inside, as you could tell from the previous Aventura sites and White Plains, New York site, very warm, minimal, kind of natural-inspired, modern finishes. The rest of our space has that back of house with an employee restroom and a small office with the, this back door then goes directly to this back area here as well. And that's all we've got.
Let's go, I'll hold on just a moment. You know, on the illustrations you had, the elevations for White Plains, New York and Aventura, Florida, you showed the distance it was to the nearest exit. Aventura, 70 feet, White Plains, 344 feet to the exit. And you can see that both those are set up in a way where the, it looks like you can get vehicles in and out fairly easily. But I can't quite get the visualization of your rendering on the drawing that you provided in terms of, you know, how far is it? How far is it to the nearest exit? And how do you get the cars in and out of that space? What are we doing there? How does that work?
So our storefront is widened to be eight feet max. I believe it's just under that for the car width. And then the mall is actually planning to widen the storefront as well for the nearest exit. I don't have that. Do you have that measurement, this exit?
No, will it look more like White Plains?
Correct.
Where it looks like, almost like a welcoming garage door in a way. You mean, you got a big wide opening, and it's kind of beckoning people in?
It's still two double doors, but yes, it's, they're very, they're very wide and large.
But not like Aventura?
Correct. It'd be closer to White Plains, yes.
Closer to White Plains?
Yes.
With glass in front and then the ability to get vehicles in and out through a space that's wide enough to get them in and out, obviously?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. Just thinking about speed on getting them out. You know, if we had, in a remote circumstance where you had a problem, how fast can you get them out of there, and where do they go? And how far do they have to go to get out of the mall?
Sure, Rivian can speak more to options on how to drive in and out of these spaces with their vehicles.
Mr. Mayor, did you mean in case there was a fire?
Yeah, in the remote event there was a fire.
Yeah, so, and then, so answer his question. And then add to that, just describe how you would actually do that.
Yeah, if I can just describe how we get the vehicles in and out. In the, in the site layout here, there's a, sorry, you guys, you'll have to squint just a little bit, but the route in red is our path of travel of getting the vehicles in and out of the space. And so typically, with all the other stores as well, we would have our staff take the vehicles through the corridor of the mall and into our space. And so with the intent of widening the doors or the elevation of the storefront is for that ease of access there. And then, as Madison has mentioned earlier as well, the landlord's committed to widening the entry of the mall for that quick access, for the vehicles to go in and out.
Go ahead.
But if it's on fire and we need to remove it, I understand, I think you were saying you would follow the same path. But how do you physically do that? Because you're not driving the car if it's on fire, yeah?
So I think the fire measures that Matt had mentioned or just really needs to be emphasized as for fire safety. And I think the ability to have the BMS system so that if, in an event, that it can be signaled if there is an issue with the battery. And then the low state of charge, these are all kind of risk mitigations in the case of a fire vent. And so if the vehicle, however, is caught on fire, I think that's what we just need to continue to work with the fire department with.
Just scroll back to your, I'll call it a site plan, but your floor plan there. Now, I do see in the corner it says 220 feet to the nearest exit. As I look at the plan, yeah. Where's your floor, you go down a little bit further, please. Yeah, so you've got, this is helpful. So what's presently shown is number one is where the cars would come in and out.
That's correct.
That narrow opening widened, I guess, it doesn't look like it would even accommodate a car. But it strikes me that in the name of safety, that this space of 3,200-plus square feet could be reconfigured because you have an outside wall, that you could reconfigure this in a way where you move these offices off to the side. And you had a back door right there to the outside. You almost had like a garage door back there, or you could make it a glass door, and people could see it from outside. They could see, you could have a Rivian sitting there facing out. So that if there were, in the remote event there were a fire, you're just dragging it 50 feet and going out a garage door. Right now, you've got your offices blocking up your closest exit to the building, out of the building. And it seems to me like a good architect like you've got could figure that out. You don't need much of an office anyway in this environment. So, I don't know.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. We have considered the fire marshal's consideration in that. And we've greatly respected the decision as well, looked thoroughly through the design. But like, the, one, the programming of how our floor plan is set up is very standardized throughout our retail stores because there is a science behind the way that the customers interact with the displays, the vehicle education, the touchpoints, and how the vehicles are carefully placed at the showroom. And then the back of house being kind of where all the workers are currently working. The implications of...
I'm not suggesting at all that you change the configuration of how the cars are displayed in the front. I'm suggesting that you fix the back end of it so that you can get out of the building right away in the remote event there was a fire. Instead of somebody trying to figure out how to drag it down a narrow highway, not a narrow hallway and out the front door of your space. Because the idea is really a good one. I've seen it down in, you know, I mean, there isn't one there anymore, but in Miami Beach on Lincoln Road, they had a Tesla dealer. And it was all glassed in, and people were in and out of there. It was busy. I think this would be really kind of an interesting aspect of a mall operation. But we got to think about what could be the worst possible scenario and keep people safe, keep you safe.
Absolutely.
It doesn't strike me that it would be that hard to modify the architectural footprint here to be able to go out the back dragging a car straight out and modify your plan a little bit.
It would constrain our space. And then, just to note, that the rear entry of where our store is currently located would have to do some significant modifications to the existing. So there's a transformer out there from the utility company, as well as the tree, as well as an existing light post as well. And then we just would also have to maintain the path of a vehicle that would then compromise the back of house to get the vehicle out of, directly out into the street. So Mayor, these were considerations definitely that we've reviewed thoroughly. And so I just, but I just want to stress the importance of safety as well, as well as the opportunity that Rivian has here in this community, specifically in the Galleria.
Okay. Patricia?
I do want to say that I really hear what you're saying about safety and just needing to have a way to get the vehicles out that is much easier than dragging them through the Galleria. I think that's a problem. The other thing, you know, on a regular basis, if the cars are going to be coming in through the Galleria, you know, and I'm online trying to figure out, I should know this because I walk the Galleria all the time, but the flooring changes quite a bit, and, you know, these are heavy vehicles. What are they going to do if they are, you know, routinely going on a wood surface or whatever it is that's down there now? So that's a less dramatic concern, but I do really think that fire safety is important. So, just that.
Yeah, I would think Galleria has given that consideration, that concern, which is a legitimate one, is that what's the impact on their floors of hauling, how much does Rivian weigh? What's the heaviest Rivian? 6,000 pounds?
Roughly 7,500.
7,500 pounds for the SUV, yeah? Councilmember Jackson, then Councilmember Pierce.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, you've talked about the fire safety of the vehicles themselves. What happens to an electric vehicle if the neighboring store catches on fire? What's the fire risk of the vehicles if there's a fire in the mall and these cars are in there?
That may be a fire marshal question.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a great question.
Mr. McAdoo, you want to be a fire marshal too?
That's a great question. I really couldn't answer that confidently.
Because I think, you know, when we're talking about having to pull it out 200 feet, you can monitor all you want, but you can't control your neighbors. So I'd be interested if you have anything that you can provide with us between now and the next meeting just about generally the risk of electric vehicles, if they're exposed to fire.
Okay. Yeah, we can definitely propose or bring that before the next decision. But I believe the walls, we can see if the walls has a rating in itself, has a fire rating, along with the surrounding surfaces as well.
I suspect our fire marshal knows what the suppression strategies are in the rest of the mall and how quickly they can put out a fire in a conventional retail space. So I don't know if you want to come up and comment on that, whether that's a risk or not, but it's a fair question.
Yeah, honestly, being that it's a sprinkled space, it's probably not a great hazard unless the fire developed enough and overran the sprinkler system. Yes, fire is a hazard to the batteries because what can happen is that as the batteries are heated up, they'll end up in thermal runaway as well. So if that fire gets big enough, yes, it could, it could have an effect on those batteries, starting an incident that would increase the duration and intensity of a regular incident at the mall.
But the sprinkler system reduces the risk of that considerably?
In general, yes. Sprinkler systems do a very good job, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Well, with this 30% maximum charge, our fire marshal back up here again, please. With the 30% maximum charge that you recommended and that the fire protection engineer for Rivian recommended, I mean, are we sitting up here worrying about not much of anything? You know, other people have risks of fire. I mean, they're obviously more safe than an old lead-acid-battery, internal combustion-powered car. We know that from looking at data, at least that's what I found today from looking at data.
Yes, the risks are relatively minimal, right? But my concern is when we add a new risk to an area that didn't have this risk to begin with, right? If you think about the space we're in right now, this commercial building, City Hall, the likelihood of City Hall starting on fire is very low. But I don't make recommendations of reducing fire protection in this space, right? So, kind of like you said before, I have to look at the worst-case scenario because that's the day that I arrive, right? I arrive to put those fires out that weren't designed to start in the first place. The mall being an older building didn't have EV vehicles in mind when it was constructed. So building codes were slightly different, fire protection standards weren't there. So it's just trying to come up with that balanced approach as to what we can do to try and be as safe as we can and bring this opportunity to the area. So, do I think it's possible? I do think it's possible, but...
But not probable?
Fires? Yep. There's a low likelihood of a fire in any of these spaces, right?
I mean, to the point of introducing a risk that wasn't there before, don't we do that every year with the flower show?
We absolutely do, and we take a lot of precautions around that one.
Yeah, we load up, we let them load up all the aisleways with flowers and impede movements of people.
This is true. We do have a lot of safeguards in place that go along with the flower show, so...
Member Pierce?
Don't leave. No, so, I mean, this is a public hearing. And so I just want to level set what you guys are hearing from us is we actually don't want to back down and just say, well, it's a minimal risk, so it's okay. You've heard at least three ideas that we think could reduce that risk even more. So whether it's 5% or a 2% risk, we would like to hear when you come back, well, all right, here are some ways that we think we could further reduce that risk. And we're not experts, right? So my next question was going to be, I think Rivian has something like 7,000 cells in it. Well, so the cars in the showroom, are they going to have 7,000 cells as well? If they have fewer cells, that minimizes further the risk of a cell catching on fire. And so I would encourage you, Marshall, don't back down. That's your job, is to say, yeah, we're introducing a risk, and we need to find a way to mitigate that risk. You gave three ways to do that. We gave two more. And so I think that's a lot of feedback for the team to go back and think through to see if there are other ways to further reduce the risk. And that's what you're hearing from us. And I think it's the right message, frankly.
You know, you think about remote risk, there's a guy, I know he's always going to celebrate his 88th birthday. Well, he lives in Florida in the wintertime, and he got a call the other day from his neighbor, and his golf cart in his garage with his lithium-ion battery burst into flame and burned his garage down. So, I mean, stuff can happen that you don't ever expect would happen. I don't even know if he had it connected to anything. You know, I don't think he was keeping it on a trickle charge or anything, so... But if we had a thermal runaway fire in a mall where you were trying to drag a car out 250 feet under intense heat conditions, and people are in there panicking because they're in there shopping, and it's Christmas season, for example, we got to think this through, all of us, carefully, you know? You might think that's not going to happen, and we think, well, we don't think it's going to happen either, but you never know. It's a device with a huge potential for fire if anything does happen, just like you said. I don't know what I think about it, but this is a public hearing. We're not making a decision tonight. And Member Pierce gave you some really good guidance. Think about everything you hear tonight, whether it's from us or whether it's from the people who are going to testify or that send in testimony between now and the 19th of August, or whenever we do the cutoff date. So, thank you, Mr. Moon. Thank you.
I'm happy to continue to work with Rivian to come up with the solution collaboratively on this one, so...
Okay, this is a public hearing matter. And we're going to open it up for public testimony. See if anybody here in the audience wishes to testify regarding this matter, whether in favor of it or opposed to it. You'll have three minutes. There's a lighting system that we use, so everybody gets equal time. And you'll have 30 seconds left when the yellow light goes on, and then you should be thinking about wrapping up your comments. So if you would desire to testify regarding this matter, please feel free to come forward, identify yourself, give us your address for the record, so we have all of that, so... Anyone wish to come forward and testify? Hearing nothing, seeing no one coming forward. Let's move to the virtual world and see if we got anybody online that wants to testify.
I don't have anyone online just yet, but because there is a brief delay in the broadcast, I'd recommend we wait about a minute before moving on, giving people an opportunity to call in if they'd like. My clock shows that it's 8:51. I will come back to you at 8:52 or when I have a caller, whichever is first.
I'm going to tell you that, why we're waiting here to see if anybody comes online. And I'm talking to the Rivian folks. I'll talk to, we'll talk to Heinz and the ownership at Galleria about this issue, if you, if you think it has merit, about the direct access to the outside and see what they say. You've probably already addressed that issue with them, and probably got a negative response, but I don't know if our staff has, but we would, if you think you, that has, has merit. And from what I've seen, that your architectural firm has done other places, I think they could come up with something pretty creative if it would otherwise work with the mall operator. Okay. That time has passed, nobody's.
It's now 8:52, and I still don't have a caller, so I think you are safe to move forward with the agenda.
Okay. So the staff is recommending that we close the public hearing at noon on Sunday, August 10th, 2025, and then continue the action to the August 19, 2025 city council meeting. Is there a motion of that effect?
So moved.
Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds the motion that we close the public hearing on this matter involving Rivian's application for a conditional use permit on Sunday, August 10th, 2025, and continue the action of the August 19, 2025 city council meeting. Any further discussion on that motion as stated? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Motion is adopted. We'll continue this matter for public input until noon on Sunday, August 10th, and then we will take it up at the August 19, 2025 city council meeting. Thank you to everybody from Rivian for being here, to come all this distance. I don't know if you noticed the difference in our smoke versus your smoke, but out in the atmosphere. Yeah, it is green. Yeah, we've had a lot of rain this summer. It looks good. Minnesota always looks good in the summer. All right, thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're going to move on to the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda. This first matter we've delayed talking about for several meetings as we tried to gather more facts and think about possible resolutions on this issue. And Manager Neal, I know that you had suggested to the council that we act on the request for that tree donation at Pamela Park. Before we have a discussion about, are you kind of agnostic about that?
Well, I think what we know is that it will require unanimous vote of the council to accept the gift. If there's not a unanimous support for that, then we could move pretty quickly to Plan B.
Yeah, we, well, we, okay. We're going to have a conversation here at some point in time about what's been proposed here, and I think try to keep the motion out of it to the extent that we can. I don't know if Director Vedder, you have any input you want to have with the council before we take the matter up?
Mayor, members of the council, I'm prepared to give you a brief introduction on the item, if you would request that.
Let's do that.
So those watching at home know the circumstances that you're going to be discussing this evening. At Pamela Park, the north end of Pamela Park, the property owners at 5805, when their home was being built, I believe it was in 2018, donated 15 trees. I believe at that time it was through the, through the builder, through their process, however it worked out, that they donated those trees at that time. Prior to that occurring, back in 2014, the city council adopted a policy about accepting donations and how that could function. In 2016, that was refined a little bit further to spell out specifically for trees and memorial benches, how we work with those, with those types of donations. At that time, that those donations were occurred, I know there was conversations with the city forester. There are no memos or anything to that extent. It was, I believe, a conversation around future donations, around that. In May of 2015, those homeowners did plant six Colorado blue spruces on park property. That issue was brought to our attention by adjoining neighbors. The city forester had a discussion at that time about removal of those trees, because they had not gone through the normal donation policy, which is that the city council must accept them. And the unanimous is, I believe, a four-fifths majority vote. So four fifths, normally, four votes tonight, it does not change based on the number of members that are seated this evening. At that time, the homeowners did not want to remove those and proposed that they be considered as a retroactive donation on that site. That site in particular, on the north end of Pamela Park, is not a programmed or an active site. One piece of information that we do want to be clear with the city council this evening, if you're looking at your screen, it is on the north end near the entrance. However, the city has received a Minnesota DNR ash removal grant, and we have been actively removing ash in these highlighted areas. The grant is very specific that it does require a replanting ratio that does vary a bit, whether those ash were removed in a wooded area or in a more open or potentially considered a manicured area, based on that. However, we do know, based on the maximum, that 96 trees will be replanted in these zones as part of that, that grant for, for removal of ash and then replanting of species. City staff does not plant Colorado blue spruce. They're not a prohibited tree. However, we have found that they are highly susceptible to disease and do not function well in this climate, primarily due to humidity. So city staff has made the decision that we do not plant them. So if the council were to accept the donation this evening, we would request that the homeowner be responsible for the removal if those trees did succumb to disease. I think the biggest thing that we want to piece in this is that we will be replanting trees in this area. So I know there were some concerns expressed about views into the park, blocking views. We are going to be required to plant trees in this zone, in these zones that are highlighted. So we just wanted to make sure from a city staff perspective that those residents in that area were prepared that there will be replanting.
Questions for Director Vedder? Anybody? So to be clear, that we had the policy in effect on donations of trees starting in 2016. This policy was not followed with respect to this particular matter, where the six Colorado spruce were planted on city property, and then the party that planted them came in and asked to donate them after the fact without getting permission in advance?
Correct, Mayor. The initial trees in 2018 were followed through that policy. The council did accept that donation in advance in 2018. In 2025, it was not.
2018 was a different homeowner?
I believe it was the same homeowner.
Same homeowner.
Yes. The council recognized the donation from the builder, but whether it's the builder or the resident, I think it's.
But the process was followed in 2018?
Correct.
Any other, yeah. Councilmember Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this kind of goes beyond what you just talked about, but you, in your memo, said that there was sort of a three-phase if, or maybe that was what Manager Neal sent us this afternoon, but a three-phase where we'd ask them to remove them, we'd ask people if they wanted to plant them in their own home, could come and remove them, and then the city would be responsible for removing them if the first two options aren't taken up. Can you tell us kind of what the cost to the city is to remove these trees, or if we get to option three?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Jackson, I believe the city attorney can help me with the exact language, but if the donation is not accepted, it would basically be a trespass. I don't know if trees can technically trespass, but they would be there placed without city permission, so we would require the removal. I think the perspective is to give a reasonable amount of time. I don't know exactly what reasonable amount of time would be to request that the homeowner transplant them or remove them, to satisfy a reasonable request. If not, then they would, city staff would then have to determine a method to remove them. To transplant them, I believe we did receive one code. It was about $1,000 per tree, and that's if we wanted to transplant them. Obviously, a full removal would be the, for this extent, would be a lot cheaper. I don't know the exact cost. I mean, our city staff can handle tree removals, so I don't know about the, the time that that would take to put an hourly dollar value for staff time and equipment on that. But I think that would be the progression, I guess you could say, of, of how this would flow. I don't know if that matches the city manager's comments earlier, but.
I think it does. The other question is, if we remove the trees, we would, would we be able to still plant in that area? Because I know root systems, they haven't been there that long, but root systems can make it difficult to replant trees.
Mayor, Councilmember Jackson, I do believe we would be able to replant in that area. I don't know if we would replant in the same exact root ball zone. Our plan for replanting that area would be in 2026, as part of that grant, finish up removals and then go back to replant. So it would have to be some sort of remedy. We wouldn't want to leave a hazardous condition by removing a root ball.
Okay, thank you.
Member Richard.
I have a lot of concerns about the process and the way this unfolded, because when this came to us initially, it did say six blue spruce. Now, when I look at what we're supposed to or are being asked to approve tonight, it just says six trees. And what's frustrating to me is I try to prepare for these meetings so that I can make decisions that are fully informed and good for the city of Edina. And when this first came to us, the only reason we learned that there were problems with the donation was because we were contacted by a resident. And then the more I dug into it, the more I learned there's city code that does say you can't just go in and plant a tree on parkland. And we rely on the Hennepin County list of trees for, you know, the trees that we accept for replacement trees. This is not on there. And then I was contacted by a resident who told me how problematic these were, how there used to be a bunch of them by the tennis courts, and they all died. And I feel like this is something that, on the one hand, keeps happening. I keep getting things before me that are not fully informed. And so it's up to me to find out, and I, I'm getting really frustrated, and I really feel like I need to be paid more than $12,000 a year, because I'm doing a lot of research here. And if I could get those images that show the code that we're talking about, so prohibited encumbrances or obstructions, and this refers to a park or public ground. And it does say specifically fences or landscaping. And the trees that were put in, my understanding is they're primarily there for landscaping. I did do a little digging to like taxing implications of being able to deduct a tree. You know, it's, it's not being planted so that it will provide timber in the future. I don't think we can say that it is part of our tree replacement policy, since it's not in the Hennepin County list. And if we were to accept this donation, we would be setting a precedent so that other residents could go in and plant and landscape in ways. And these trees, if you were to extend the property lines further back, fall within the resident's property. So it sort of ends up implying that it's, you know, extending their land. And so that is a problem as well. So, and as this unfolded, it unfortunately ended up being framed as a neighbor versus neighbor thing, which I think is so unfortunate and really incorrect, because this is a basic case of somebody, a resident, doing something that is not in alignment with code. So my question is, why wasn't this just nipped in the bud in the beginning? And instead of, oh, we're going to bring this to council and ask them to accept it as a donation and not tell them all of the stuff about it, I don't understand how this all came to be.
Mayor, Councilmember Richard, I apologize for the lack of clarity and consistency on this item. I apologize for that. We have talked internally about how we will talk about the tree donation policy and what that means, and if we need to review the process. We had done that several years ago with diseased trees and assessments. We revamped our policy based on feedback that evolves over time. In my five years, this is the first time this has happened. So I apologize for, for how this got in front of you this evening. The staff report in here does call out that they are spruce in the letter, and that part of what we would require, because they are spruce, and we were not consulted on the species, is that the homeowner would be required to pay for the removal of those trees if they succumb to disease. So I just wanted to be, to be clear on that, that we did highlight that in there, but maybe not so much in the resolution. There probably is an inconsistency for the word Colorado blue spruce then, between the second page and the third page in your packet.
Right, that's the content we got for today. The initial content had really, it would have been on us to go, oh, Colorado blue spruce. I better look it up and see if that's an okay tree. And I feel like with donations, they need to be screened before they come to us, and if there's issues, we need to know. And it's not just trees. I did go back, because now I'm concerned about donations, because I'll be, with so many things that come at us in the packet, I'm not focused on donations. And so, you know, I went back and I saw, oh, we accepted a photo for $150. Did we assign that value? Or did we affirm that value? Because that's an object, you know, and so I feel like there's other things with the donation policy that I'm concerned about. But, you know, as we're moving forward and we're talking about this, I don't think we want people just planting trees in our parks without consulting staff. And I also feel like we do not want residents removing the trees. I feel like the, the best, most logical thing that would protect the city of Edina would not be to say, okay, you know, resident, you can remove it however you see fit. You know, I've got images of somebody out there with a little axe or a chainsaw or whatever, who knows? And you are, you and your staff know how to remove trees in a public park in a way that is safe. You and your staff know how to do the infill on the ground so that it is safe, and no one's going to go tripping in a little divot or whatever. And so I, I feel at this point, what we should be doing is having that happen, and the residents get billed for the, the cost of the labor that is incurred from that. So I just, those are my thoughts on this.
Yeah, thanks for that. Member Pierce?
I suppose I should say something. So I appreciate Director Vedder that you take accountability for this. I will say I don't, we don't run the city as the city council. And so the city staff, the city manager, they run the city, right? We make decisions, right? But I don't think it actually is my job that if a resolution comes forward and it's a blue spruce, or white spruce, or white pine, or whatever, if it comes in through the process. the process, I do have confidence that if it follows the process, you would say, this is not on our list. We should not accept this because of all these reasons. And I have full confidence that that's what would happen. Luther would be right there, talking about it right now. And I think that is the way it's supposed to work. And then, as a council member, I'm taking that information, and I'm trying to make a decision based on that. The problem I have with this is it didn't follow that process. And because it didn't, the biggest issue I have is, we are kind of talking about it in a very sanitized way. And so, I was clear about this weeks ago, when I reached out, which is another thing that, as council members, we're supposed to do. So I reached out on this. We are talking about it still as more of a sanitized way. These residents planted trees on public property, and they shouldn't have. That's what the issue is. And we should say that. They shouldn't have done that. Could there be 30 good reasons why they might have done that? Sure, right? But the issue is, they shouldn't have planted them there. And it really doesn't matter why they planted them there. And for us to sanitize it and say, well, we'll just accept the donation, like, that's not right. We shouldn't do that. And so, all the other stuff that goes around that, the, why did, did it happen, and what happened in 2018, and when was the policy established, all of that, is good background to have. But the issue is, they planted trees on public property, and they're treating public property like it's theirs. And they shouldn't do that. And so, we should be addressing that factor. And I don't think we should go to the extreme of saying, well, you committed a misdemeanor, right? We don't need to do that. But we should come up with an option, which is not retroactively accepting a donation to address it. And I think that you guys have looked at, you've walked around the issue, and you've come up with a different option. But that's, like, that's how I, I feel about it. Residents did something they shouldn't have done. And to have other residents then fill out a petition that says we should leave them there, like, the whole thing is funny to me. It's just laughable that we would do that. Because the issue is, they're treating public property like it's theirs. They shouldn't have planted the, the trees, and we should rectify that. And we shouldn't sanitize it and pretend like it's kind of okay, because it's not. So that's...
Yeah.
And I, you know, the comments I made earlier about my role as a city council, I got that from my previous mate. I was sitting there. And I, that's what Kevin Staunton told me. It's like, hey, you could pretend like you work for the city and understand in detail what's in the code. You have more than one job to do. You got a day job, James. You have to be able to look at an issue and dig in to get the details from the city, but you got to let the city run the city. And so, I don't, I don't engage in the role in that way. And does that mean I miss some things? Sure, that may miss, that may mean I miss some things. But any time that I've had questions, and I've reached out, whether it's Manager Neal, one of the directors, or one of the managers, I've always gotten the information that I needed to make a decision. So, I don't want more money, because I'm fine with the level of detail that I'm going to give. And I think I'm pretty effective at how I do it, so.
Thank you, Member Pierce. Thanks for those thoughts.
Mr. Mayor, if I could say a couple of things to interrupt?
Yeah, let's, why don't we hold off until we hear council's comments, and then we'll go to you as a lawyer?
Of course.
Okay. Councilmember Jackson has a few thoughts too, and then I'll share mine, and we'll go look for some legal advice here, or some legal guidance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, there's an old saying that it's easier to ask for forgiveness than it is to get permission. But I think we want people to get permission. And that's plain and simple how I believe in. And I think we have a process, a very easy to follow process. The developer was able to do it, and if they didn't get permission, the trees shouldn't be there.
That was succinct. Yeah, well, I think, just as Member Pierce was talking about, I was thinking about, if one of his neighbors didn't like the fact that he had to look at Member Pierce's backyard and decided to go over and plant some trees that Member Pierce was supposed to create a better level of privacy for himself, I mean, you just can't go on other people's property and plant stuff.
Yeah.
You know? And so, to your point about, it's, at least the developer or the builder knew in 2018 that he had to ask for permission.
Yeah.
And now, we got somebody asking for forgiveness. And I don't, I don't attribute knowledge to that person, that they may not have known and learned about it after the fact, because they came in and then asked for permission by virtue of the fact that they're asking to make a donation. So, I don't impute ill intent here, but I just think we've got something important to think about. All of you have mentioned it in your own way, and that is, you just can't go on public property and do whatever you think you want to do to, whether it enhances your property or your public property, without permission.
Right.
You just can't do it. So, what do we do about it? You know, I mean, the obvious thing is, you reject the donation, and then what do we do about these trees? I mean, we all, we're in the trees, you know, in our town. We got, I drove by there, and there's, there's six great-looking trees. And they're not, they're not so big that somebody couldn't move them. So I, I think this idea of getting them out of there somehow, giving the owner a chance to move them into his own yard, or if he doesn't do it by a certain point in time, we, we open it up and let people say, I'll take one, you know, and I'll dig it out of there with my kid and put it in the back of our pickup truck and haul it away. That seems to be a potential solution anyway. And, but I'll turn now to our, our city attorney and ask him for his input on this issue.
Of course, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Just a couple of thoughts for me, and I do just want to emphasize that I know we've, you know, there's been some, some discussion about how this was, you know, not done following the ordinary process. And I do just want to reiterate that, you know, we, we have definitely communicated that to the homeowners, that this is, you know, that this was not following the normal process, that they should have gotten permission to do this in advance, that there is a process, you know, to do that. And so, I, I think the, what's before you now is really just the question of, you know, what do we do with these trees, given that we're here already? So this is just what happens with the trees. We also heard a suggestion that we would potentially accept the donation, but, you know, keep the homeowner on the hook for if there is tree maintenance in the future. And unfortunately, I just don't know that we really have a legal mechanism to do that. If we are accepting the trees, they are becoming city property, and, you know, there's not really a way to make adjacent homeowners responsible for maintaining public property. So I, you know, I, I know, you know, trees can be susceptible to disease, or can live for, you know, 100, 200 years. And so, I, I think the decision is, you know, are we accepting them? And it's, it's a sort of a very, you know, it's an up or down, are we accepting them or not? Also wanted to go, I know Councilmember Rissler raised a code provision involving the spruce trees. That one, so there is a specific provision that says that the city does not allow spruce trees to be planted in boulevards. That one is specifically aimed at boulevard trees, is specifically aimed at visibility on roads. My understanding is that these trees are not close enough to the street that they would constitute boulevard trees. And so, I, I don't know that that specific provision applies in this scenario, although, of course, there is still the general provision that you can't plant trees on public property. So that, it's sort of that one specifically.
And actually, the boulevard, I think, is more along Oak Lawn, where the spruce trees were put in the other project that I mentioned earlier. So, sorry about that confusion.
One thing I wanted to make clear too, and I think a lot of us, I mean, if you've been around a while in life, you're a human being, and mistakes get made. And so, to Member Pierce's point, for standing up here as our director and saying, yeah, my apologies, I, yeah, we appreciate that. But people, mistakes get made in, in processes, and it wasn't really your job to figure out if these, you know, these, these trees that were proposed for donation were something that we, I mean, I think, it's, I don't want to, I don't want to blame, I'm not blaming you, I'm not trying to blame the messenger, you know? Because things can happen, and we, but we caught this. You know, I mean, Member Rissler, and maybe, maybe one of our residents who lives over there called her, or somebody at City Hall, I don't know how the circumstances are, but we are where we are. We never accepted the donation. We got to the point where we needed to be to make a decision on this thing. And so, regardless of how we got here, we're in a good spot. And we, and whoever made it possible for us to get here, thank you. For those of, on staff that may have missed something, that happens once in a while, and there's no fault to be laid, in my opinion, just for that, for that circumstance. So, Manager Neal?
Thank you, Your Honor. So I, I want to just share again a possible solution for the council if you choose to not accept this recommendation. And that is to give the owner approximately a month, excuse me, the, the resident at 5805, right? 5805 Brookview Avenue, to give them approximately a month to remove these trees. If they're not removed, we would consider them to be abandoned. They're on our property, they belong to us at that point, and we would then take, we would take some action to have them removed. I think the, you know, we have a, an estimated cost of $1,000 a tree, so $6,000 to remove them. I think it would be too bad if we had both removed the trees and were out $6,000. So that's why I'm suggesting something in between, right? To allow a landscaper or a tree guy with a spade, we do not have a tree spade to move these trees, to come in and, and take them, and to remove them, and take them somewhere where they're more appropriate to be planted. If that doesn't happen, then we would remove them. We'd probably remove them by cutting them down and taking them away.
Yeah, I think there are landscapers and developers that would...
I don't think they would, I, I, I think there would be somebody who would take them just for the value of the tree. So that would be my proposal to you, is that we, we give the, the owner until September 12th to have them removed. If they're not, we'd have a couple of weeks in which we would allow first come, first served, or to connect, we'd develop some kind of process to allow them to be taken.
You provided some specific language for this, and I'm assuming that you had some role in the crafting of the language. And so, it seems to me that coupled with that, we'd want to deny the donation, and then attach further conditions? Or do we want to just avoid that issue at all?
Mr. Mayor, procedurally, I think the options in front of you are either approve the donation or reject the donation. If the donation is rejected, then I think we'd just be looking at council direction on how to handle it. We wouldn't necessarily need, like, a resolution or anything to that effect.
That's what I, that's what I think too.
Oh, yeah. I was, I was going to couple it in the form of a, of a resolution, that we would deny the donation, and then articulate the timeframe that you'd have, so that it was, it was memorialized by this council as to what we thought was appropriate to do. Member Rissler?
Just one question for the attorney. Does instructing or opening up this window for a period of time for the resident to remove the trees, it's public land, does that expose the city to any risk if he gets injured removing the trees, or something were to happen?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Rissler, I don't believe there would be any necessarily, any liability on the city's part. You know, liability for the city as a property owner generally comes from, you know, dangerous conditions that the city isn't correcting. And since there, we're not necessarily creating any dangerous conditions here, you know, this would be done, you know, they still have a responsibility to act in a reasonable manner.
We have immunity, I think, in some cases like this.
Okay. And then, to Councilmember Pierce's earlier point about the role of council and the way, you know, I feel like at this point, you know, our, our role is to vote whether or not to accept the donation. I think staff's role is to figure out how to deal with the trees, and that's not really our place. So I'm uncomfortable with being prescriptive in that way.
I guess what I'm offering you is just how I would, how I would take care of the issue if you reject the, if you reject the gift, if you don't approve it.
Yes, I'm agnostic about, I mean, I kind of like memorializing the action that we're going to require, denying the donation and then saying this is what we're telling the homeowner he has to do, but I'm not going to follow my sword over that idea. If we just want to direct staff to follow those general guidelines, that's fine with me too.
Yeah, I, no, I, I actually think it's the same thing. What you're recommending we memorialize is what staff is suggesting we do, and we're just putting that in the motion. We're still in our advising role, and so I'm okay either way. We'll do that. But I'm, I'm, I think we are advising, we've given advice up until this point, and the city is, has an option B, right? That's how option B became option B. The only question I have, and I guess I make it as a statement, Manager Neal, I don't think the city should be on the hook for any costs to remove those trees.
Agreed. I agree.
Yeah, and so if it ends up, and I interpret what you're describing as a way to have residents come by the trees, like...
Take them.
Just take them.
Oh, just take them.
Donation.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, I just, I don't think the city should be on the hook at all, you know?
And that's why I, that's what this approach was designed to, to do, not to, we shouldn't have to incur costs for this, for this kind of thing. And the idea of incurring costs and then chasing them through the, the small claims court is just not probably going to be very effective for us.
Oh, yeah. And so, just to be clear, what I meant was, if a resident wants to come get a tree, the resident is covering the cost to come get the tree.
They do.
Right, that, that's what I meant.
And clean up the mess that results from it, too.
And the city's not on the hook to do that.
Right.
Yeah.
If, if this was done in the form of a motion, my notion was that we deny Resolution 2025-58, and then direct staff to inform the resident who planted the trees, they have until September 12th, 2025, to remove the trees and repair any damage to the landscaping caused by the removal of the trees. And if he doesn't do that by September 12th, the city will consider them abandoned, and then publicly offer them at no cost to anyone in the city of Edina who will remove and replant them, including repair of any damage to landscaping created by the removal. And if no one comes over to claim and remove the trees in whole or in part by September 26th, the city will remove and dispose of the trees. That was, that was what I was going to propose in the motion.
Very close, but I would say we, we move to reject the gift rather than to deny the resolution, because you don't want to make a negative motion. So we move to reject the gift, and then all the other...
Yeah, I guess it's accept or reject or deny the gift, yeah. So with the, with the notion that we would reject the, the acceptance of the tree note donation embodied in Resolution 2025-58, and then have the rest of that language?
Yeah.
That would be the form of the motion?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
That you would make? Jackson?
Yes, so moved.
Member Pierce, would you second that?
I would second that.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Just the, the way that the statute on donations works is a donation is proposed, and then the council has to act on it. And the, it's worded as, you know, if, if it's not accepted, then it is denied. So there doesn't really need to be a motion to deny it. So it would, it would actually be a, the, the resolution that's in front of you is a...
Not to accept.
A resolution, it would be a resolution to accept that would then be voted down. And then...
Okay, okay. We can do that. We can do it in two steps. You withdraw the motion, and you withdraw the second one.
I withdraw the motion, yep.
All right, let's go with the other way then, that is a little bit clearer and less coupled, if you will. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2025-58 accepting tree donations at Pamela Park adjacent to 5805 Brookview Avenue?
So moved.
We got a motion of second to adopt Resolution 2025-58 accepting tree donations at Pamela Park adjacent to 5805 Brookview Avenue. All those in favor of adoption of that resolution, say aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay. The nays have it unanimously. The Resolution 2025-58, which would propose accepting tree donations at Pamela Park adjacent to 5805 Brookview Avenue is rejected and that, that resolution is not adopted. The donation is not accepted. On the heels of that, I would ask if anyone on the council cares to propose that we direct staff to inform the resident who planted the trees, who resides at 5805 Brookview Avenue in Edina, to, that he will have, that they will have until September 12th, 2025, to remove those Colorado blue foo trees and repair any damage to the landscape, landscaping caused by the removal of the trees. And if the resident does not remove the trees by September 12th, 2025, the city will consider them to be abandoned and then publicly offer them at no cost to anyone in Edina who will remove and replant them with our supervision on the removal, including repair of any damage to landscape created by the removal. And if no one comes over to claim and remove the trees in whole or in part by September 26th, the city will remove or dispose of any trees that remain on that, on public property at that location. Is there a motion of that effect?
So moved.
Is there a second? All right. Any further discussion?
I have one question.
Yes, discussion, yeah.
So the latter portion of that. Then the city removes them. Do we assess the homeowner, the cost of that?
Actually, we just don't have a sense of it.
Yeah. The removal would be in the form of cutting them down, I take it.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, the, pursuing the cost of that would be through filing an action in small claims court, which we could do to, you know, try and recoup any cost. I know there, the, there was $1,000 a tree figure, that was for replanting the trees. I believe the city would be cutting them down, which would be substantially less expensive because it's much less significant undertaking.
Okay.
We would have to weigh the cost benefit of trying to pursue that in small claims court. You know, it's, certainly it's something we could look at, but we want to make sure that we're not going to be spending more on.
That's fair.
The action than we would be recovering in cost.
And that's, that's what I think it would be in my, in just general sense.
And that, that's fair. We could address that in a, in a subsequent motion.
I'm comfortable with that. Thank you.
We got a motion of second on the motion as stated. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried? Staffs got their direction. Thank you for that guidance from both Manager Neal and our city attorney. All right, and thank you, Mr. Vedder, Director Vedder. All right, now we've got another donation matter to deal with. Hold on a second, let me find that one. We've got Resolution 2025-66, which is another proposed donation, multiple donations to the city of Edina that are embodied in that, in that resolution for, to the parking wreck department, the police department, Art Center, and the Senior Center. Does anyone in the council care to move the adoption of that resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by, moved by Member Jackson, seconded by Member Pierce, the adoption of Resolution 2025-66. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of Resolution 2025-66, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried? Those names will be on the city website, and the donations were, we had six donations to the parking wreck department for memorial benches in different parks, from Glorious Wright, Mary Wiley, Meg Adkinsen, Anne Gleeman, Peter Dinevick, and Carrie Devon and Ryan Davies from as far away as Scottsdale, Arizona. Thank you to all of those folks for the donation of those funds for memorial benches for loved ones. And then the Ruling Green Neighborhood contributed $9,000 for flock cameras to the PD, and so we're enhancing security over there. And then the Art Center also had some donations, including a grant from Hennepin County for youth activities in the amount of little over $7,000 for an art lab program. And then the Senior Center had a grant as well from Griswold Home Care for $410 for a shredding event over there, shredding truck over there. Thanks, everybody who was a donor to the city of Edina, we greatly appreciate it. And now we will move on to the next portion of our agenda, which involves, well, we'll see some bond sales and finance presentation, and we've got some activity we've been involved in with respect to construction activity in our community and bridge building and other things we're going to talk about. So I'm going to turn it now over to Pod Tower, Finance Director, and Nick Anhut, our municipal advisor from Ellers, is here as well.
Well, good evening, Mayor and Council. Yeah, good evening. As you may recall, on June 17th, the council authorized the issuance and sale of general obligation bonds to finance the remaining funds needed for our new Fire Station Two project, as well as the reconstruction of President's A and B Streets in various water sanitary sewer and storm sewer capital improvement projects. Bids have been received and tabulated by our city's municipal advisors, Ellers and Associates. And so with us tonight, Nick Anhut will present and share those results with you tonight.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Nick Anhut with Ellers and Associates, municipal advisors to the city of Edina. And as Pa just mentioned, action before the council is to award the sale of bonds to finance a variety of different projects that were authorized back in June by the council. So there were different components of this bond issue, as Pa mentioned, namely about $10 million worth of funding for the Fire Station Two project. That would be the last tranche of debt issued for completion of all the project expenses related to that project. There's also street reconstruction components, as well as utility capital improvements that are underway currently at the city. Each one of those different components will be repaid by a different revenue source, the fire station by a dedicated tax levy, the street reconstruction paid by assessments levied against the properties benefiting from those improvements. And then the utility components will be repaid through the various enterprise funds that the city administers for the water sanitary sewer and storm sewer systems that it operates. I'm happy to say that the city last week, its AAA credit rating was affirmed by both Moody's and S&amp;P, which is a, the top credit rating that the city has had in place since back in 2000 and 2003 from both of those agencies. It is the highest possible rating that they do award. A credit rating is necessary in this, in this type of a transaction to provide the marketplace an indication of the ability and willingness of the city to repay its debts. And so it's a, a kind of a qualitative measurement that that, Moody's and S&amp;P is giving the marketplace about whether or not they think Edina is going to be good on its debt repayments, and they think that you're among the top across the country. So something to be proud of. And it also allows us to access lower interest rates when we do go out to the market with a bond sale like this. This morning, as I mentioned, we did open bids on the purchase of these bonds, and we did receive seven bids on behalf of the city, with the winning bid coming from Baird. It's listed as Baird here. They actually represent a syndicate of more than 30 different investment banking institutions that pooled everything together under Baird as the manager of their syndicate. But there were also other bids provided from a variety of different national firms. Piper Sandler here in the Twin Cities, also Truist would be one that we haven't seen recently in city transactions, but a whole cast of characters that we have seen in the past. I will note that the spread between the low and the high bid, the low meaning the lowest interest rate that, that is being proposed from Baird and the high from Truist is only .05 percentage points. It's called five basis points, but it's a very tight spread, tight grouping. Usually that gives us an indication that there's some consistency in the marketplace, that that's kind of where this type of a transaction should price, and this is certainly reflective of that, all, of, all of these seven different bids, all coming within that type of a grouping. One thing I do want to note in particular for the council is that in discussions with staff, we were able to ratchet down the amount of borrowing since I came before you in June, particularly for the Fire Station Two project that will be repaid by a tax levy. In discussions with, with staff regarding the progress of that project, there were some contingency dollars that had been built into that budget to, you know, plan for a kind of rainy day type events, work orders, things that were unplanned. It was determined that didn't necessarily need that full amount of funding, and so we were able to actually reduce by about $2 million the amount of borrowing necessary. So where we had planned about a $25 million transaction, with your action tonight, we'll actually be locking in at $22,345,000. So for the levy component that was projected for the repayment, we're, we're actually reducing it by about 20% from what we were planning on before. So from about $880,000 down to $700,000. So that's a good, good news on the project. You're still going to be able to deliver that project on time, on budget, as planned, but we're able to reduce the amount of borrowing necessary to fund it. The other good news is that, that interest rate is lower than the, the estimates that I came before you and projected. I, I had put together an estimate of about five, or, excuse me, 4.57% back in June. I am conservative when I do put these estimates together in front of the council, especially knowing that there's quite a bit of activity that takes place in the market. We were estimating about half a percentage point higher than we thought they would actually price. Turns out this was, you know, more like .6 percentage points lower. So good news on that front as well, good to lock in a lower rate and that the market didn't spike on us in this time period. So both of those components mean lower cost to the city, lower tax levy than originally anticipated to impact your budgets. So with that said, there is a revised resolution put before the council, 2025-62, has been revised by your bond attorneys at Dorsey and Whitney after reviewing of the bids that were provided, awarding the sale of $22,345,000 in general obligation bonds. This will award the sale of the bonds to the low bidder, Baird, based on the terms that were proposed within their bid, and it would lock in the amount of financing necessary for the projects that we described and set us up for closing on August 28th at the end of this month. Happy to stand for any questions of the council. We certainly recommend awarding this bid based on the low bid from, from Baird.
Questions from council members, sir? Mr. Anhut? All right, let me see if I captured this proposed resolution correctly. Resolution 2025-62, which would award the sale of $22,345,000 in general obligation bond series 2025A to Baird based upon the lowest bid, their lowest bid on the bond issuance.
Perfect.
Is there a motion of that effect?
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Member Jackson, seconded by Member Pierce to adopt Resolution 2025-62, which would award the sale of $22,345,000 in general obligation bonds, series 2025A to Baird, based upon the lowest bid on the bond issuance that we had for the city. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the resolution as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried? The resolution's approved. The award of sale to Baird is approved at $22,345,000. Mr. Anhut, as always, thank you for your good work on behalf of the residents of the city of Edina.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. And I don't think you're done yet, but.
I'll stick around.
Stick around, yeah. And now we're going to go back to Ms. Del Rimple, who's taken care of all the business in the Planning Department here this week, I think. Resolution 2025-38 subdivision and variances proposed at 316 Madison Avenue. And as I mentioned, back to Emily Del Rimple, our Assistant City Planner, and go ahead, Ms. Del Rimple.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. The request tonight is for a subdivision and variances at 316 Madison Avenue. Homes Within Reach, the applicant is proposing to subdivide the property at 316 Madison Avenue into two lots. The two lots would both have dimensions of approximately 46 feet by 130 feet. The parcel was originally plotted as two lots with these dimensions that were combined over time. The proposed subdivision would reestablish the original lot sizes, which are consistent with the majority of the other lots on the 300 block of Madison Avenue. The existing house would remain on the north half, or the north lot, and the applicant would build a new house without variances on the newly created lot. Homes Within Reach is a community-based organization that creates and preserves affordable homeownership opportunities in Hennepin County. They are a partner organization of the city. Both the existing and the new home, as proposed, or as a result of the subdivision, would be sold to a household earning up to 80% of the area median income and held in a land trust to ensure long-term affordability. The city council held a public hearing on July 15th. The public comments closed on July 27th, and no comments were received on Better Together Edina. The Planning Commission reviewed and unanimously recommended approval of the request, and tonight the recommended action is that the city council approve Resolution 2025-38 approving the subdivision and variance to lot width, lot depth, and lot area for 316 Madison Avenue. With that, I can answer any questions. And the applicant, the representative from Homes Within Reach, Brenda Lana Wolke, is in the audience tonight.
All right. Council members, questions for Ms. Del Rimple on this matter? It's back in front of us. And you had no public comment, I think?
We did not.
And we didn't have anybody testify regarding the matter from a public input standpoint? Did we get any, did we get anything submitted in some other way other than bettertogetheadina.org?
We did not.
Okay, all right.
There was one public testimony, I believe, at the city council hearing last meeting.
So we've got a couple of different pathways we could take here. One is adoption of the resolution, which would approve a subdivision in variances to lot width, lot depth, and lot area for 316 Madison Avenue to give us another homeownership opportunity in Edina at an affordable price point. Does anyone care to make that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Member Rissler moves, Member Jackson seconds, the approval of Resolution 2025-38, which would approve a subdivision in variances to lot width, lot depth, and lot area for 316 Madison Avenue. And that requires a simple majority. Is there any further discussion with respect to that motion? All those in favor of adoption of Resolution 2025-38, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried? The project's approved. Folks, thanks for being with us and sticking with us tonight. Really pleased that you found this opportunity and it will get somebody else, another family living in Edina, up in the president's neighborhood, great little neighborhood. Thank you. Okay, and now we're on to the franchise fee conversation continued. And Chad Milner, our engineering director, has this matter with regard to potentially changing to a percentage on the franchise fee.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, in front of you this evening is ordinance number 2025-06. That's in regard to CenterPoint Energy. And ordinance number 2025-07 for Excel Energy, and we're going to be talking about utility franchise fees. So we're at a decision point in 2023. We came in front of the council and had some fee updates, and we said we'd be back for some plan reviews in 2025 and 2027. So we're back. At the council retreat, you directed staff to proceed with some options to generate an. an additional $1 million for street reconstruction, to take that out of the general levy, but you noted the important work that the franchise fees currently do for the PACS Fund and the CAS Fund and street lighting. We had two work session discussions on April 16th and May 6th, and this evening we're recommending you adopt a new percent fee model effective January 2026, establishing a new 4% fee for all customers with one change. Working with our partners at Excel Energy, we would suggest a 4% fee up to meters that have a revenue generation of $200,000. So once we reach that number, which is 30 to 40 meters, then the percent after that would change to .3%. And that has about a $250,000 change in our revenues, but that would address some of the really big meters in town, really big fees that we might see on our largest customers. And I'll share a little bit more about that as we move through this. So how come we can do this? We have a statute listed here that we are allowed to create those if we have a franchise agreement, and we do with both these parties. We established this in 2012 for the PACS Fund, 2016 for the CAS Fund, and like I mentioned, we were back in 2023, we added streetlights. Here's where we are today. We have a monthly fee, a flat fee across these meters for both CenterPoint and Excel, and residential is the first, so we typically talk about these fees based on residential customers. Currently, it's $3.55 for each of those, and that's the column highlighted with the orange arrow. And then we did put some additional information on just annual amounts, the number of meter counts, and the estimated revenue as it stands today. And just a note on the bottom that our residential customers do account for 67% of the revenue. So we've had some of our commissions, specifically the Transportation Commission and Energy and Environment Commission, because it does, this relates to their work, stating that that number feels high to them, that it shouldn't be this geared towards residential properties funding that much revenue. So there's discussions about changing the rates on the commercial side. Just comparing to some of our peer cities in the residential customer class, Brooklyn Park has the highest rates at $7 for each, so they would be charging $14 compared to our $7.10. And we're down near the bottom where Plymouth is at $3.53. And then on the right is the uses that each one of those communities use those fees for versus what we use it for. Then we compare the same peer cities, or some of the same cities, on the customer class, and these are ranges, right? So Bloomington is anywhere from $11.90 all the way up to $182. We're at $6.71 currently per month on all those electric and natural gas fees for our various commercial customers. And again, towards the middle to the bottom of this chart. And then since we're talking percentage-based fees this evening, we also provided those for both residential on the left-hand side, so anywhere from 5.25% down to 3%, and on the commercial classes, 6.75% down to 3%, and we're proposing that 4%, which fits kind of right in the middle of various cities that do a percent fee-based model. If we adopt this new percent fee, this would become effective January of 2026, and again, it'd be that 4% on all customers up to, and then having that Excel caveat about up to $200,000 of revenue, changing to .3% after. Created $3.6 million. It's basically covering the $1 million that was discussed at the council retreat for street reconstruction. And again, the individual customers are going to vary based on their energy consumption and the gross revenues each year by these various utilities. These are just projections. Actual revenues will vary by year versus having those flat rates. So if we got a really cold or hot year, those revenues will go up, and if we have a more moderate weather year, they will go down. Currently, if we were going to convert our current rates to an average percentage, it would be about 2.7%, just to give you an idea where we're at. So here's what it would look like on that 4% model. For residential customer, for the gas would be $3.39, and on the Excel, residential would be $4.64. And we gave you all the other customer classes here, kind of a lot on this table, but why would we support it and why would we not support changing to a percent model? We would support it because it creates an approach based on the consumption, so higher energy users pay their fair share. It rewards energy efficiency. Why wouldn't we support it? We have a risk of not meeting those revenues if typically the weather moderates. There's some predictability in those energy bills go away with those high-use months or rate increases, and certain customers are going to see very large increases in the amounts of tens of thousands of dollar increases with this. When we look at those highest meters that I've referenced, why we may want to charge them a slightly different rate when we get up there. And there was that last work session we had with the council, is can we compare taxes to these fees for that $1 million of street reconstruction? So we tried to do our best here. It first should be noted that taxes and energy use vary greatly across the city, right? Every parcel has different taxing agencies, different energy use. These calculations are based on a medium-valued home and an average residential energy user. So there's probably three of those in town when we look at all the various uses. And just so you know, the median value home is at $712,000. So the first column there, the flat rate, that's what we're charging today, $7.10. If we go to the percent fee on a residential customer, that would increase to $8 a month and an increase of 90 cents. When we looked at the estimated tax on a medium-value home for the $1 million in street reconstruction today, using general levy of dollars, that's $3.27 is what we estimated. If we would change that to this new fee on a residential customer, because we're changing that, and the commercial side is going to pick up more of that revenue because of that percentage, because they are the bigger users, we would actually be paying, a residential customer would be paying instead $1.98. So there's a decrease there of $1.29, so the, from the increase to the decrease, there would be a decrease overall of 40 cents or 39 cents approximately for a residential customer if we did this switch. So we're recommending an adoption of a new percent fee model at 4% for all customers, and embodied in an Excel ordinance is that caveat of, once you reach that $200,000 of revenue, it'll switch to a .3% rate. And we would recommend adopting both these ordinances tonight on first reading and waiving second reading. And I'd be happy to stand for any questions, and we do have a representative from each agency in the audience if I can't answer your questions.
Very good. Thank you for that. We've been talking about this matter for several months, and I'll turn to my colleagues now and see if anybody has any supplemental questions or clarifications. Commissioner, Member Risher.
Just curious about the rate reduction down to 3% when you get over that, what was it, 200K? It's kind of gave me flashbacks to the ready kilowatt ads, like the more you use, the more you save. And I'm sort of wondering why the decrease.
We, yeah, I didn't state why we thought this was a good idea. Most of those customers are already working with both these agencies to reduce their energy use as much as possible. They're just very large businesses. I mean, think about some of the biggest in town. So they're already doing everything they can, so it's almost, they're doing good work, let's not charge the rate all the way to the top. And then there's going to be some PR concerns with those very large customers when they start to see some bills. So this shows that we're addressing those and notifying them or acknowledging their potential fees and bills coming up with this change.
Thank you, and I appreciate the comment about what they're already doing.
Thank you.
For Pierce. Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I think this is a neat opportunity to combine the reason we're doing this with environment and energy, because it would be, I think it would be neat for us to share this, and you said 90 cents, right, was the delta. And so I just did a little bit of research, very light research. What would it cost for a resident to actually save 90 cents of power, right? And it actually is very achievable to do that. I mean, it's as simple as in some cases, you know, switching off lights or, you know, not running maybe one dryer cycle when you look at kilowatts per hour, putting in more LED lights, that kind of thing. Because the reason I like the percentage fee is because we're trying to give more control to the homeowner, right, so they can impact that number as much as they can, and we're trying to shift the burden to the larger users, like you said, with the higher bills. And so I'd like that. I think it would just be kind of neat to also say, all right, this is a change we're making, and here are some ways as a resident you can impact your power consumption so that your 4% is less.
You have more control.
Yeah, yeah. So, all right, Member Jackson is smiling.
We have...
How's Member Jackson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a program that you can do. You can sign up for Home Energy Squad, and they'll come out and they will help you reduce your energy bills, both heating and electricity. So Director Milner, can you tell people how they can do that?
Yeah, you can go to our website and find information on there to sign up, and we actually pay a portion of those visits. So we do that through our CAS Fund, which this pays for, so it's kind of a round robin of, yes, you do this, and we can lower those rates. So yep, check our website, and we can help out with that.
Thank you.
Something...
And I'm sorry, I just want to thank you for the work on this. You guys put, both you and Director Tao, put a lot of work into this. Excellent presentation showing the analysis, and I'm super excited about this because it's an incentive to save energy.
Yep, I think that's well said, and the presentation was really thorough. The one thing that still gives me a little bit of pause is the alignment of purpose and use of the funds with beneficiaries. And so maybe you can help me with this. I mean, it seems like the people that are going to be paying the most, bigger companies, bigger users, aren't necessarily getting the benefit of us using this money for building out our sidewalk system or adding to our street reconstruction. It's in the neighborhoods itself that they're going to be benefiting. So residential customers may be taking the bulk of the responsibility here at 67%, but maybe that's appropriate under the circumstances. And I'm just interested in your observations about the, if you're comfortable with the alignment of the charges with the intended use of the funds.
Sure, and I'll just remind the council where the funds go to, right? The pedestrian cyclist fund, this is to build a multimodal transportation system through the entire city, and we do that in commercial areas and residential, try to fill those gaps so customers can get to some of these larger businesses, but also for the residents. We have the CAS Fund, where we do work with our, again, the larger customers on various systems and policies that are in place there. Street lighting, that's all over town too, so that's one thing that would be there. And now there'd be street reconstruction. So our city's just laid out where it's mostly residential, but we are in some commercial areas doing recon. We just did Southdale Neighborhood last year, next to a lot of commercial businesses, and this would go directly to that program at $1 million. So I think it is spread out.
So your point is there's a broad range of beneficiaries here?
Yes, I agree with that statement.
Both commercial and residential?
Correct.
Mr. Mayor, I would add too, right? And if these are, these are the kinds of project costs, if we don't fund them with this revenue, we fund them with tax revenue, so they do have a connection that way, too.
Okay, thanks for that. That's helpful. So we've got two ordinance matters to deal with here on that, on those percentages, and they differ slightly with respect to Excel over a certain level of revenue capture, and then go to .3% over $200,000. So let's take the CenterPoint Energy ordinance first, which is ordinance 2025-06. Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number 2025-06 regarding energy, gas energy franchise fee with CenterPoint Energy?
So moved.
Second.
And a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Pierce, to adopt ordinance number 2025-06 regarding establishing the gas energy franchise fee at 4% of use with the CenterPoint Energy. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of ordinance 2025-06 stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Ordinance 2025-06 is adopted. I forgot to ask about waiver of second reading. Let's go back and take second reading on both of them when we get done. With respect to ordinance 2025, oh, let's do it one at a time so they're sequential. Is there a motion to waive second reading on ordinance 2025-06 that we just passed on a first reading basis?
So moved.
Second.
And a motion, second, to waive second reading on ordinance 2025-06, which was just passed by the council. Any further discussion? All those in favor of waiving second reading on ordinance number 2025-06, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. And then with respect to ordinance 2025-07 regarding electrical service franchise fees with Excel Energy, is there a motion to adopt that proposed ordinance in its stated form from Director Milner on a first reading basis and waive second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Member Jackson moves, Member Pierce seconds the adoption of ordinance number 2025-07 regarding imposing the electrical service franchise fee on a percentage basis with Excel Energy, and also waiving second reading of that ordinance. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the ordinance 2025-07 have stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, carried. Those two are adopted, and now we're going on to our facilities manager, Derek Otten, and Perry Vedder is back with us as director of our park and rec program to talk a little bit about a construction bid on the project we approved over at the Aquatic Center.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We are back this evening with some additional information that you had requested from the July 15th meeting, as well as Mr. Otten will be presenting the updated construction cost numbers that came in from the bid results that he solicited. Just a reminder, I don't think I need to spend a lot of time on this slide, but have a timeline of the progression on how we got to this point of reviewing the Aquatic Center pump and filter room, as well as some additional planning that we had taken you through. Just as those watching at home, one of the things we did look at on some horizon-level planning was the pump and filter room addition, the equipment replacement, and opportunities for user enhancements. Some longer-term planning was conducted on facility upgrades and expansion, really meeting user expectations, addressing some operational challenges. Those were not proposed at that time, and they are not proposed at this time, but we did want to keep those fresh for you to look at consideration. Again, you saw this last time. This is just some survey results that we look at annually from feedback from our users. Always most important are two bookend numbers, which is the safety of our participants and our staff, and we use this kind of as a guide to say, you know, what things could we look at for user amenities in this first portion of the project? Again, this was information about our pass holders, resident versus non-resident, both for the last two years of season passes, as well as some one-time credit card use balancing out the resident versus non-resident ratios. So the shaded box with the hatch around it is the area, if this was a top-down view of the Aquatic Center of the project we are discussing this evening. However, we did look at additional horizon-level planning. One was to really put a front face on the Aquatic Center, both from a visibility standpoint, but also accessibility. Those, we often get calls, is the hill still there? And every year we have to report the hill is still there, and that elevation does cause some operational challenges for some of our visitors. So a more welcoming and accessible avenue to the Aquatic Center is high on the list, as well as additional concession deck area, more food and shade. Obviously, I mentioned the revised ADA pathways, and just some new deck boundaries. I'll show you some pull quotes that we got of the survey, but just how people enter and exit the Aquatic Center is something that has evolved with newer centers over time that our facility is in. has evolved with newer centers over time, that, that our, our facility is in need of. New group areas, gender, neutral family restrooms, that is a big request that we get, is just a, a facility that a mom can take a son, a dad can take a daughter, and not have to go through those two locker rooms. That's a, a big need and a lack of a facility that we have here, as well as some of the other, you know, reservable cabanas and the, just the, the park and family restroom structure as well. Kind of lays out where, where some of those horizon levels are. But again, the, the numbers and the proposal for you this evening is just on that filter room addition that Mr. Otten will take you through in a little bit here, as well as updated numbers on the two alternatives. And just for your reminder there, the alternative A was for that rentable, reservable space for our patrons. And then, alternate B was, we have to take out the shade structure for this project, was to replace it with a solar canopy as well. And just different looks on, on how those would be viewed. We were asked to do a little bit of additional futuring as well, kind of that green area that's hatched out. It would be that expanded entry flow for additional concessions, updating of those locker rooms and restrooms. The idea here is to get people into the Aquatic Center, and then let them choose the, the restroom and the locker room that they need to go to, rather than forcing them through a locker room, as well as additional deck space. The two areas in yellow are currently in use now. One is the Flow Rider, and the other is our zero-deep play area. If we wanted to look further down the horizon of, of what could look like in the future, I always want to give that caveat of, if we were going to do that today, what we might consider and do. We don't know what those trends will be five or 10 years down the line of what, where we want to be in that cutting edge. But if we were to do that today, we'll look at some of those things. And really, kind of basis of where we looked at that was additional from the, from the survey results we collect. Wanted to share a couple of pull quotes for you from that survey, as I mentioned. Really, it's always about seating and shade, having to force a, a, a parent through the locker rooms to begin with, and then not having that backstop, where if kids do go into the locker room, these restroom, they can just keep going right out of the park as well. So, so really, that's about it. It's, you know, the improvements that are needed, bathrooms, shade, seating, and really, really having that flexibility for families. Again, just a top-down view of the Aquatic Center, kind of that hatched-out area of where in the horizon you, you could expand to. This is kind of that welcoming area of, you know, could you catch people as they're coming in for that visibility and get them into the center earlier than possible, bringing actually the Aquatic Center towards, towards the people arriving, rather than making them pursue it. Kind of a bird's eye view of, of how a new entrance and concession deck could function by then allowing kind of a greater shaded food area, and then turning the existing entrance and concessions into those family-changing areas. Again, just kind of a top-down program of, of how we could use our existing infrastructure to, to update the center. As I mentioned, there are kind of those two longer-term areas where if you did look at further planning, what would you do today? These are kind of the latest trends, right, is climbing walls into the pool. We have zip lines now. People like to, to do these things. They're being added across that, again, with the caveat of future trends would be down the road. The other popular item that people are installing now are the, the splash pad concept, where you, you could get away with expanding the season. I think that's why this is attractive as well. You don't need to guard these. They still have state pool codes and things of that nature you still need to be mindful of, but it doesn't require lifeguards. So, you'll see a lot of communities are installing these, and it actually can extend the season. So, when you think about our greatest limiting factor is our staffing. We hire a lot of high school, college students that come in and, and operate the facility with us. This kind of can expand that window in time, back into May, into September, and give you that greater flexibility that we can't just staff as well. So, that's just kind of a quick walkthrough of some of the horizon planning that we've brought you through, some additional areas of consideration. And now, oh, we had one additional slide of what revenue could be generated. And the, kind of the rentable, reservable space, our staff member, Nate Morrison, he's come in this evening. I'm going to call him up because he came late at night here to, to watch and listen, did some great research for us. Obviously, there are a number of communities in the metro that already have these. He actually looked also at the Wisconsin Dells area and outstate to kind of do comparisons on how people are managing them, what occupancy rates they have. And we can expect in that area of about a $30,000 to $40,000 revenue potential for that reservable space. When you look at down the line for additional ones, additional group area and rentable space could be in that $60,000 to $70,000, and an increase in concession lift of about 15 to 20 with those expansions. And then, Mr. Otten done some math, and the solar arrays could save about 25% of our power. And with that, I'm going to turn that over to Mr. Otten for the pricing discussion.
Was it solar, alternate A or alternate B? I can't remember.
Alternate B.
B.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, there, right there.
Yes. So, I'm just here to kind of bring you through where we're at today. As you can see in the slides, you know, we, we talked about the June 2022 numbers. We were at 50% schematic design, at about 2.8 million. Late 2024, it went up to 4.3. That was at 50% design development. In May of 2025, we were at 95% design development, and we had a $5.858 million project budget for construction. And then, we went out to bid, as I presented back in mid-July. I said we were going to be conducting that bid process. Bids closed on the 25th of July. We tabulated them with our construction manager at risk, and they came in quite favorable. They came in at $5.03 million. So, it was, the, the bid environment actually worked out in our favor this time. You can see that the soft costs remain the same. Those are mainly, you know, set costs for some of the design, engineering, and equipment costs. The contingency lowered, that is percentage-based on that construction cost price, as did the tariff contingency that we're carrying. So, both of those went down, you know, in the representative amounts. So, right now, we were showing an $8.988 million project budget. That was back in May of 2025, when we were projecting that in July. At the end of the month of July, we were able to reduce that to $8,53,763. And that is just the, the base bid, right? That's a guaranteed maximum price that we got from our, our construction manager at risk. And then, we have two alternates considered, too. Alternate A is that rentable, reservable area, also came in very favorable at $287,000. And then, alternate B, that's that existing shade canopy, and that came in at $91,000, $91,389. So, overall, we were really favorable to the, the markets and some of the, the estimates we had before. Initially, we were showing at $8.988 million project budget. It's at 8.432708. So, that's where we stand today. Any questions on this slide?
Yeah, Director Otten, questions for Director Otten?
Yeah, Member Pierce?
No, you go ahead.
Alt A and B?
Yes.
Like, that's almost unbelievable. So, describe how those numbers came in so significantly lower.
Sure. I, I had the same questions today, too. And the response I received was, is a very favorable bid environment right now. A lot of contractors are coming off of school work. This project is slated to start in the fall, right? So, that is, you know, they're coming off that work. They're looking for that interim work. Same thing happens in the spring of '26, when we'd start to ramp up the finishing stages of this. Contractors are looking for infill work before that school season starts, too. So, it's a product of the bid environment at this point in time. That's what we're seeing. Yeah.
And then, last question on, I think you said the solar array was B?
That's correct, yes.
You've told us this before. How much energy do we think we can save with that?
I, I don't have the exact amount, but as Director Vedder said, it's about 25% of the actual pump room, the, the energy. That's the biggest energy use of the.
But we don't know how much dollar value that is.
It's, it's not at this time. It's very tough to put a dollar figure on it, just because the, the energy generation ebbs and flows, and we're also based on the market rate of whatever the energy provider is charging us. But it's about 25% of the actual power that the, the billing uses.
It just seems like that $91,000 cost to build it, you should be close to paying for it a lot sooner.
Relatively quickly, yeah.
Than we thought before. And so, that would be a, that would be a good message to, to be able to share.
And, and I should point out, I'm sorry, I should point out that the, the solar array is actually paid for through the CAS fund that Chad brought it forward to. So, we, we have a separate funding source for the actual panels and the installation of it. This is just for the structure itself that it would be mounted to. Yeah.
Councilmember Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the alternate A is the rentable areas, and it looked like estimated about $30,000 a year revenue would be generated by that. So, it'd be paid off in 10 years? Yeah, that sounds like a pretty good return on investment. It would.
For a pool.
Yeah, yeah. For, so that's kind of a, that's exciting. And I guess you answered the other question, which was the payoff period for the solar panels. We don't have any way of judging that, but.
Not, not exactly, because like I said, the, the bills come in, and it's based on market rate. And then, you know, it's tough to predict what the sun's going to generate at any given time. So, but we can track it over time. It usually takes about a year to get that data in, and then we have a better idea of, you know, what's the actual performance of it? You know, how quickly are we starting to generate this, you know, revenue source from it, or, or offsetting our costs mainly?
So, we're seeing pools in the metro that have solar panels? Are there any out there? Can we go see what they look like?
I can't answer that, honestly. But I, I'm sure we can research it a little bit and get back to you.
Oh, that's a good, okay. Well, say that again.
I said, I, I can't answer that, but I'm sure we can research and get back to you with that.
And then, what was the energy bill for the pool overall last year? Do you know?
I, I do not know. I could get that from finance and get back to you. The utility billing department is, you know, handles most of that stuff, so.
Okay, great. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Member Risher, any questions?
What happens to the energy generated from the solar panels when the pool is closed?
It goes back into the grid, right? So, there's, there's always a cost for the building, right? There's, there's a minor amount of energy that gets used during the off-season when the pool is closed. You know, it offsets that cost, obviously, and then that energy produced goes back into the actual grid itself, so.
Okay. I appreciate the reduction in cost. The issue I am having is the timing of us moving forward on this project, when there are other investments we really need to make. And I'm thinking of the budget as a whole. And so, I'm, I'm still very much concerned about that. And there's other projects that I keep thinking about. And I know we've been talking about the need to fund firefighters and all of that, but we also have, and I was reminded of this as I was eating pizza in this very small, crowded room over at the police station. We, we need to do improvements on that facility as well. And so, that is what I'm really wrestling with right now. And it's, it's hard to have this come as a separate thing, especially when I know the goal is to make sure that the property tax rate is below two digits. And so, I don't know how with, you know, money is going to have to come from the general fund to pay this off, and so, that's really hard. So, just where I am right now.
So, just kind of a, a quick update on the decision timeline. You know, we, we were here July 15th. We talked about considering the tax, property tax abatement, up to $8.988, $8.988,000. I'm sorry, I'm struggling with that. $8.985 million. There we go. And then, we reported we back August 6th with the guaranteed maximum price with alternates A and B. That's where we're at today. And then, if everything's approved tonight, we would start construction late August of this year, after the, the pool closes for the season. So, about August 25th.
Do you go back to that prior slide, please, the costing slide? Just an observation, I was thinking about, when I first got on the city council, I think we were in a, we were in an economic slump back in, back in the time the city hall was built. So, what was that, 2003 or?
2024.
Or? And so, we were wondering whether we should build the city hall or not, because we were in an economic slump. But it also meant all the contractors were looking for work, just to the point you made here a few minutes ago. And we get this building built for $175 a square foot, which now seems like a total bargain, which at the time, people were thinking, why are you putting all that copper on there? And so, it's, there's two sides of this thing. I mean, you, you, you see it in the pricing that Member Jackson and Member Pierce have raised. I mean, how, how did you go from $700,000 to under $300,000 on Alt A? And it just makes you think, well, you know, to Member Risher's point, there's other places that we need to do things, too, but you might be smart to just do this when it's coming in at less than half the cost you projected it to be, because of some things that are going on in the broader economy. So, I don't know, just something to, to consider as we, as we contemplate whether to add Alt A and Alt B to the, which I suspect will be the passage of the, of the approval of the balance of it, and that contract with contractor, with H and U, H plus U. Anyway, other questions from council members or observations? What are council members' thoughts on the Alt A and Alt B? You know, we've had some conversation about it, some good questions have been asked. If we go with Alt A and Alt, Alt A and B plus the contract, the costs were still half a million under what we thought it was going to cost us for, just the cost of construction. So, thing to contemplate, too. Councilmember Jackson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I'm concerned about the solar panels. I've seen them at parking lots, and I know they have a certain amount of, they're shiny, and they're not light impervious, right? They're capturing the light, and so, there's no sort of filtered shade like we're accustomed to. And I just don't know what that experience would be like. And then, I don't think anything would happen where they'd get broken or something, but it's glass in the pool, and just the visual of that makes me nervous. I'm sure you would not approve something that wouldn't be safe, but, but I just, I can't, I'm having a hard time picturing so, solar panels, and I just don't know what the payback is on them. I guess I wish I could go see them. And do we have to make a decision on this tonight, pretty much?
Actually, the way the contract is written, we can make a decision on the base bid, right? The guaranteed maximum price of $5,03,827. Alternates A and B can be decided later, or they can be decided tonight. If they're decided later, we just add them in as a change order. We've already got the pricing for both of those. I would, to answer your other question, though, about, you know, the light, I guess, you know, emission through those, they're not installed in a flat manner. There is an angle to them to capture the, you know, the greatest amount of sunlight as you possibly can. So, there will be some light that, you know, is able to transmit through both of those panels when they have spacing on them. As for glass breakage, you know, they're installed on top of roofs everywhere throughout the city, carports, things like that. It's tempered glass, so when it does break, it doesn't, you know, shatter into a million pieces. There's a laminated film on there, so it stays attached to the panel. There's plenty of them that break and are still functional, you know, deministrate a function, but they're still functional for, you know, the life of the panel still. So, it's pretty common for hail and things like that to come through and, and crack a few panels, you know, sometimes minor, sometimes major.
Well, I think the alternate A is a, is a slam dunk at, at that cost. I guess, I'm still, I should be pro-solar, but I just, I don't know. It's, it's too new for me to process.
You want to hold, you mean, do you want to hold off until we know what kind of cost there has been on energy production?
Yeah.
Or energy costs have been the last couple of years? I mean, we don't have to act on Alt A and B tonight.
Yeah.
Could take it up at the next meeting after we get more information.
Okay.
Perry?
Yeah, Mayor, can we just clarify with Derek? Alternate B doesn't actually currently include the panel installation. This is just the structure that we have existing that we'd be replacing.
That is correct.
So, the actual panels, if we didn't want to put them on later on, that's a separate fund that we're paying for with the sustainability funds.
So, go back to the view, though. But we got a grant for that, I thought I heard you say.
The view of the.
A and B.
A and B, so.
There we go.
Yeah. So, alternate B, that is the, the existing shade structure that needs to be removed for construction to happen. And, and part of that is access to the filter room, but all. construction to happen. And part of that is access to the filter room, but also because the supply lines for the pools run directly underneath there in concrete. So one way or another, alternate B, that shade structure is coming out of there. And we'd just like to be able to replace it with an, you know, like-for-like replacement, basically.
Okay. Well, that makes a lot more sense.
So the Member Jackson's concern, you could replace that with solar panels or a tarp.
That's what's on the line.
But we would never do that, but the material you use to cover it, you could choose that at a later date.
Correct. Yeah, we currently have a shade cloth up there now to provide that added shade. It's a, you know, it's a simpler joist, kind of like a pergola structure. So yeah, whether it's a solar panel and photovoltaic or whether it's a shade cloth, we can install either of those after.
Okay, that helps clarification. Then I'd be in favor of that because people are asking for it. And that's good that we can provide that.
Yeah, Member Pierce?
I do think, I've never seen one, but I do know that they would be translucent. And I think it would be a pretty cool effect. It's not hot underneath, not as compared to if you're, you know, not shaded. And so I think it could be a pretty cool effect underneath because some light does come through. But I totally get where you're coming from. And we can make that decision later. The only comment I had, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
I think from a, from staff perspective, we are hoping that you will act on this positively tonight. You know, like a school project, there's a lot of planning that goes in so that when the last day of school goes, they're in there and they're working and because they've got a hard deadline to get out. This is kind of like a school project for us where the pool closes and we've got to get, make sure everybody's mobilized and onsite and they got to get it open because we don't want to incur all this cost and then not have the ability to generate some revenue with the pool in the spring. So that's why it's important for us.
Yeah. The only other comment I was going to make, and just being completely transparent, as I sit and I look at this, and we've talked about it before, like we're members at Interlochen. And when I sit and think about, there's a pool there, there's a pool at ECC, there are lots of, I won't say lots, but there are many members in Edina that attend these country clubs. Like, it would be hard for me personally to say, well, no, let's just shut it down, knowing that I'm privileged enough to be able to have my daughters go to ICC or go to ECC with one of their friends. And so there is a little bit of, for me, this equity piece. And I'd be willing, as a resident, knowing that the patrons at our aquatic center, many of them don't have that ability to be able to go to some of these other options. And just personally for me, I, that is one of the things I would say, yeah, I'm willing to, if that's going to increase my taxes by some percent to provide that amenity for those that live or frequent Edina. For me personally, it just feels like the right thing to do. So I was just sharing that in a transparent and sincere manner.
Another thing I've thought about since our last conversation on this was, in the face of an ever-warming world, it seems to me that if we, you know, you look at those temperatures down in Phoenix, and if we start warming here more than we have, and wherever the trend continues on warming, to have a place for kids to be able to go or adults to swim, it's a public pool and having a really decent facility, not only to serve our town, but regionally, I think, is something to be thinking about, too, in the scheme of things. I had somebody call me and ask me, I was a contractor and, you know, that existing pool room, how come we just can't add on to that existing infrastructure room? Why do we have to build a whole new building? That was one question I got. I don't know if you could, I think you told us why.
Yeah.
Would you tell us again, please?
Of course, yes. So the reason we can't just modify the DC room ties back to the balancing tanks, right? The balancing tanks are what takes the overflow of water once the pool reaches capacity, right? So the bodies displace the water. It has to go somewhere that's not down the drain. Those existing tanks were constructed at a period of time when they, you know, we have a much smaller, you know, requirement at the time. Code now dictates them to be larger. And anytime we go in and make an improvement to the pool, specifically a major improvement like this, we have to bring the rest of the pool up to code. And those balancing tanks are really what's requiring this. So increasing the size of the balancing tanks is a huge portion that we're going to have to go ahead and, you know, account for with this new building. That's a big, you know, chunk of the square footage.
Yeah, okay. Thanks for that. And then are there solar panels on alternate A or not?
We had shown them in an early rendering. We currently don't have them, but it is possible to install them if we choose to. So at the time, we were looking at sustainability funds through the CAS fund. We were able to afford alternate B. We knew that was a like-for-like replacement with the shade structure. We'd hope we would be able to move forward with it. Alternate A, it can be installed. We just have to identify a funding source and then, you know, go through the process with that.
Manager Neil, you've discussed this with your staff people. What are your thoughts about alternative A and B?
Well, we think that the time to do that, if you're going to do it, is while this project is underway. It's going to be, you know, part of this is a replacement. We think if we're going to add this now, that this contractor would be the one that would be able to do that at the best possible price.
Director Vedder, your thoughts are comparable?
Yes, Mayor. Our support would be for alternate A and B. One is just it meets the needs of our users. It allows additional revenue capture as well for us from an operating side. And then to replace that shade structure is pretty important for us from an operational standpoint. And the great piece of connectivity and streaming is Tracy Peterson, our Assistant Parks and Recreation Director, just sent me a message that the Lake Nicomas Main Beach has solar panels, the East Phillips Cultural Center, and Dr. Martin Luther King Park in Minneapolis. And we can get you imagery and some additional details on those to compare and contrast as we debate the actual solar or not solar piece of this project.
And I suspect that the nature center up in St. Louis Park has solar.
I think it probably does, yeah.
I believe it does. It's a net zero facility.
Yeah.
I don't know if it is on a shade structure or just on the roofing portion of it. We can get additional information for you, especially as it relates to aquatic center siting.
Would someone on the council care to make a motion to approve Construction Contract Amendment with H plus U Construction in the amount of $5,030,827 and also approve Alternates A and B?
Still moved.
Second. Rejection moved. Member Pierce seconds the approval of the Construction Contract Amendment as stated with H and U Construction and then adding Alternates A and B to the construction contract. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion stated, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Nay.
Carried? One nay, three ayes. The matter carries on a simple majority vote. That is approved and we go forward. Thank you for being here. And now we're going to move on to the funding part of it. And Director Tao? And Mr. Anhut, have you done some more work here?
Great. So last time, we brought to you the issuance for 2025B, which includes funding for the city's portion of the Highway 100 interchange project, as well as the aquatic center improvement that you just saw presented by Director Perry Vedder and Facilities Manager Derek Auton. So we are going to talk to you about how do we fund these projects. So with us, Nick.
As a recap, the council held public hearings earlier this summer to consider the ability to issue debt for these projects. And just to put some numbers to what Director Tao was mentioning, in those public hearings, the proposal was for $11,235,000. 2.25 million of this would be for the Vernon Avenue and Highway 100 project, again, to be repaid through a dedicated tax levy. The council did adopt a resolution to establish a street reconstruction plan for bonding purposes back in July and is currently within a 30-day petition period that is open for that question. That petition period will sunset August 17th, or the end of August 17th. In addition, funding for the project that was just approved by the council, the Aquatic Center Facility Project, the public hearing was held for issuance of up to 8.985 million to fund that project. And I should note that the costs that were just shown on the previous slide came in lower than that estimate, so we would be able to potentially reduce that amount by about $410,000. But that public hearing was held and that abatement was approved. It looks like I'm skipping ahead. Our estimates for the Highway 100 interchange component of this project, we do anticipate a levy impact of about $212,000. It would be repaid over a 15-year period of time. This is based on some estimates that we put together before the bond sale that was held today. So it is using a bit of a conservative estimate about .35 percentage points above where we think, you know, comparable to what you just awarded today. So we are still estimating conservatively. If it were to price today, we'd come in a little bit lower. Expect something closer to a $200,000 levy impact. For the abatement portion for the Aquatic Center Facility, also proposed to be repaid over that 15-year time horizon from a tax levy. The initial impact would be about $466,000 for your fiscal 2026 budget. And then it would ramp up, we're doing interest only for the first year, and then ramp up to $885,000 for the levies for the fiscal years thereafter, over that full 15-year time horizon. Again, we put these together for your packets before we knew that you were going to take action and have a lower construction cost. If we were to be able to lower that bonding amount anticipated, just to paint a picture, we'd probably expect about a $40,000 reduction to these figures that are on the slide. So that would be expected just from the lower project cost. So there is a resolution before the council to consider moving ahead and scheduling a bond sale for these particular projects. It would be called the Series 2025B, a series of bonds, the would-be general obligation bonds funding the street reconstruction component for the Highway Interchange Project, as well as the Aquatic Center Facility improvements that were just presented in the previous agenda. The resolution is stated in an amount up to $11,235,000 to fund those two components. Of course, we would work with staff to fine-tune that and lower the actual borrowing need based on the construction bids that were awarded and reduce that by about $410,000, as I mentioned. So there's no need to change the resolution. That authorization is already built into the resolution to allow, at the recommendation of staff, to reduce the amount to only what's necessary for the projects. This would schedule that bond sale and bids to be solicited for award at the council meeting on September 2nd. And so the council would be presented with the results of those bids and then have a resolution prepared to consider awarding and accepting on the basis of the lowest potential interest cost. So happy to stand for any questions on that front. We do recommend that, since the council has now approved the project, that it move ahead with the funding aspect as well.
Questions for Mr. Anhut? Councilmember Jackson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this is a question for Director Tao. We had some surplus money last year. And if we were to dedicate some of that to these bonds, would we be able to do that? I guess it's for both of you. Or is there a penalty for prepayment?
I don't think there's any penalty for prepayment on the bonds. We can use it in a couple ways, in terms of offsetting the amount to bond for, or, like you mentioned, prepay the bond down. I don't think there's a repercussion for paying it off early or in it more than the amount. Correct, Nick?
We'd be able to set aside the money to offset levy needs over the next couple of budget cycles. So you would essentially be saving money to use for the debt service payments instead of levying a new one. You would, of course, once those funds ran out, adjust your budget to levy appropriately for the remaining portion. So that is one avenue that you can pursue. But the other avenue, as Director Tao mentioned, is that we could appropriate that money and make it pay for the project expense and lower the amount of funding that's necessary from the bond issue as well.
Because there's a penalty in the market for bonds that can be called early.
A new issue, we would, we don't have to. We can make them callable. The interest rates that I was showing in assuming for this transaction assume that they would not be prepayable for a minimum of an eight-year period. Doesn't mean you can't set aside the money and use it to offset levies, but.
I think that would have the more direct impact, actually, too.
If we did make them prepayable at any time, that is something that we can do in the council's direction. I do think it's going to cost us in terms of the interest rates that we're going to be locking in and paying.
Well, the whole point of that would be to avoid interest payments. So it's kind of self-defeating to do that.
So there's some other alternatives. I think, really, if you do want to use those funds, you consider appropriating them to pay a portion of the project expense or setting them aside to offset levies on a temporary basis.
But if we approve, you know, approximately $11 million tonight, and it goes to sale before our next meeting, or I guess we have a meeting on the 19th.
You will have another meeting before we actually go out with the solicitation. So there will be an opportunity if there needs to be another action of the council. Like I said, the resolution actually just authorizes a cap.
Okay.
And allows for the adjustment to come down. But yes, the timing does work out that there is another council meeting before the formal solicitation period would go out. So we could adjust at that point in time. There's also, you know, opportunity for the council to fine-tune the amount further on the actual day of sale, but we'd like to avoid that if we need to, or if we can.
Yeah, being complicated is not my goal here.
Our plan was to bring back that same matter, though, to your next council meeting, the August 19th meeting.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. And then Director Milner, you may not, oh, do you have something to follow up on that?
Just with that follow-up, I maybe recommend, if you guys want to talk about the amount of surplus that you are considering, that maybe we can look at what would be the most, you know, the best financial move when we come back on the 19th. That might be a way to give us a little bit of direction. I would maybe recommend looking at the tariff amount and the contingency amount that were laid out on that spreadsheet that Derek has, just because we don't really have a good idea of what the tariff impact might be. So that might be something where we can use the surplus. And in the circumstance, there isn't a tariff, we would not be taking out interest on that bond and not having a tariff. So that might be one that directing the surplus towards that could be helpful.
That'd be an interesting discussion next meeting.
Yeah, that was close to a million, I think, wasn't it? 800 and some thousand for the tariff contingency.
Yes, yes. So then, Director Milner, I have a question for you. You may not know the answer to this, but we're doing the bridge out here, getting rid of the clover leaves, and there's going to be some land there. Do we have a sense from Mindot what it would take to convert that to Edina land? Would that, would there be a cost involved in that? Or have you had that, those discussions?
We've started it. We've started discussions. Manager Neil said it should be zero. And they said it should be fair market value. And, but we did get an email just recently saying they're working on it. So surprised with no number. They just said they're working on the transfer of property. So I don't know exactly what that means, but we need to follow up this year.
Yeah, because what was, $15 million for the fire station site? And if we were to buy something in the northeast quadrant, it'd be pretty darn expensive. And I think, you know, $2 million bonding to get that. Well, we want to fix the bridge regardless, but it'd be nice to say we saved a lot of money from having to go out and find the property to buy.
That's exactly what we want. It should be a transfer of property between the public agencies. In my opinion, that makes sense. They're getting a new bridge out of the project, so we should work together. They're getting a new bridge out of the project, so we should work together on that slice of property, and that's what we're doing now.
Terrific, okay. Thank you very much.
I don't see where there's any kind of an argument around fair market value. It has no fair market value, except for us.
That's, uh, that's what we say.
Not for them. They're not gonna, they can't sell it to anybody that we would approve.
No.
Including them.
We're having a polite conversation, but it's getting ready to move to the next level here. But it is something we need to get resolved this year, or at least the upcoming legislative session.
So this is an extension of Member Jackson's concerns about, you know, borrowing as little as we need to, and and if we have to borrow this whole amount, and then we're successful in the next legislative session in getting some bonding money for the pool and the bridge, how do we go about, you know, you guys might start thinking about that, too. How do we make the best use of those funds in terms of debt reduction or debt management?
Well, I could speak to the bridge piece. When we had discussions about trying to get money while it was being constructed, we can't use the funds on anything that's been completed. So I don't think we would have your normal legislative appropriations be able to use on something that's fully constructed. Typically, they want that before. The Aquatic Center is pretty similar, and the legislative session ends in the end of May or early June, so...
Okay, well, let's look at that bonding law. I don't know if our attorneys looked at that or not, or, anyway.
I have a question. Yep. So a question for Manager Neil. Kind of going back to a point Member Rissler made, so on the next council meeting, the 19th, we also have the budget view?
Yes.
I'm kinda thinking we only have one agenda item, but, but just curious, in that context of us having that initial budget view and then addressing this particular issue, would we have that more fuller picture?
You will.
In a couple weeks?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Get out of here before 1:00 in the morning.
That'd be great.
We're almost ready.
Maybe, right?
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so with respect to the funds needed for the bridge and the pool, we've got them coming back again to us, so we need to at least start the process. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2025-65, which would provide for the sale of up to $11,235,000 in general obligation bonds, Series 2025B, for the Truck Highway 100 project and the pool?
Still moved.
Second.
Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds adoption of Resolution 2025-65 for the purposes stated in an amount up to $11,235,000 in general obligation bonds, Series 2025B. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I just wanna say, we have to do this, or the pool's gonna close. It's that serious, the state of the, of the infrastructure. So I am in favor of keeping the pool open.
Okay, other comments? All those in favor of adoption of Resolution 2025-65, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed?
Nay.
Three ayes, one nay. The Resolution 2025-65 authorizing the sale of up to $11,235,000 in general obligation bonds, Series 2025B, for purposes of funding our obligations with respect to the bridge over Truck Highway 100 and the pool, is approved. Managers' comments? I don't think we've had any correspondents come in. Kirk Allison, okay. She's saying no. No correspondence has come in. Manager comments?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just very quickly to, I'll just reiterate something we've talked about a couple of times this morning, or already today. The August 19th work session will be our chance to preview the my budget proposal to you. We'll do that in the work session, and we'll have some discussion, I'm sure we'll have some more discussion about it at the meeting itself. But then we'll need an action from the council to approve the preliminary levy on September 16th, so roughly about a month later.
Okay.
Thank you.
Member Rissler, anything for the good of the order?
Well, it's late. Last time I did not do my report for Duluth, but I do just wanna briefly say how much I value being able to go to the conference up in Duluth, and I do think, at the state level, there is so much value in attending those events, and I did learn quite a bit. One thing that really kind of struck me, I did go to the Taxes, Taxes, Taxes panel, and they did say, you know, if you are looking at property taxes, and this is not gonna be a very, this is not a, this is sort of a politically suicidal thing to say, but, and you're just looking to cap it at a particular rate, and you're not looking at your vision and what you really feel your city needs, you can really end up painting yourself into a very unfortunate corner. And that really stuck with me. So, anyway, but it was really something that I very much appreciated, so thank you, and that is all I have.
Good. Mr. Member Jackson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So first, this was announced before our last meeting, and I didn't remember to say it. Our finance department is highly decorated, and they, there's a organization called the Government Finance Officers Association, and our finance department has been honored in all three areas in which they have awards, and I wanna congratulate them. So it's a Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting, Popular Annual Financial Reporting Award, and the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. And I just wanna thank them all for their really good work, and congratulations. I wanna thank Officer Nick Donahue for putting together our city response to, our city involvement in Night to Unite. That was really awesome. I got to go out with Lieutenant Venney and Joel Bostrum, our crime analyst who also operates the drone. It was a great evening. I wanna thank all the neighborhoods who held parties. It was, I really enjoyed it, and I think it was a big success. So thank you, thank you to the people who helped us get out there, and thanks for the parties. The last thing is, there's a lot of action, and this is from my fellow members, a lot of action at the federal level about changing EPA regulations and climate change. And I am in the leadership of a group called the Cities Climate Coalition, and I wondered if you guys would approve if I got to work on some resolutions in talking about that the federal government needs to continue to recognize global warming and climate change. And I appreciate your feedback on that. But that's it, so if you guys have comments, it'd be great.
Give that a little bit of thought.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Member Pierce?
Nothing for me to report. Oh, I, I should just make the statement that I did not participate in Night to Unite this year, unfortunately. You can probably tell I'm still a little under the weather, and so I definitely missed being able to do that this year. But that is why no one saw me, because I was, I've been at home Sunday, Monday, Tuesday. Today is the first day I actually went to work. So definitely missed that. And I will offer, if, if a particular neighborhood wants to meet, just shoot me an email, I'm happy to still swing by, as long as the weather's nice. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, thank you. Just quickly report out and affirm what everybody else has said, too, about what an enjoyable night it was last night. Manager Neil and the chief and I went to Centennial Lakes, Pointe de France, Brookview Heights, stopped over on the east side at one of the other parks, and they were just kind of wrapping up. And then, when the chief dropped us off, we did drive down to Weber Park, but they were already hauling tables out of there, so I figured there was no sense in coming, you know, going there at eight, I think it was like 8:10 when we got down there, but, and we also stopped at a party over on 66th Street, and it was all, they were all good, and people were very receptive and were eager to hear what the chief had to say about crime data and the things that we're working on with respect to the flock technology and the, you know, license plate readers, and, and then starting to look at drone usage on a more active basis, which I think is a smart thing to be doing, too. When you think about the ability of those drones to get up and cover, you know, cover, go wherever they need to go in about a minute, minute and a half. So that's it for me for tonight. And Member Rissler has just thought of something.
I, yes, and I have been remiss, because I did have a wonderful time going out with Lieutenant Schultz last night, and we toured many different parts of Edina, and it was great seeing him message about, you know, walk around the clock and talk to the kids and the stickers, and keep your garage doors closed. And then we went to my party, and I could identify my house easily, because the garage door was open. So that was a little, you know, reminder of all of that, but it was a really good time, so that was a really nice thing. So thank you.
Okay. Anything else? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
Member Jackson moves. Member Pierce seconds a motion to adjourn the city council meeting of the city den this Wednesday evening, August 6, 2025, at 11:02 PM. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Carried? We stand adjourned.